Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you very much for attending this meeting of the Strategy and Resources Policy Committee. The meeting is open today to the public, and I thank members of the public who've joined us today. It's good to see everybody. My name is Tom Hunt. I am the Chair of the Committee and Leader of the Council. The meeting, as usual, will be webcast and made available for people to watch later. We've got six questions from members of the public today, and we'll deal with them at Item 5. We're not expecting a fire test, but if there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from Town Hall staff who are in the room, and the assembly point is Tudor Square. If I could just ask mobile phones to be switched off to silent. And we'll begin by asking members of the committee to introduce themselves, and then the officers who are in attendance today as well. So, starting on my left, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. Douglas Johnson, councillor City Ward, Chair of Housing.
Councillor Angela Iredencio, councillor for Brumhill and Charrow Vale, and Chair of Adult Health and Social Care.
Councillor Zihir Inaz, councillor for the Darnell Ward, and Chair of the Finance Committee.
Good afternoon, Abdul Khyun, councillor for First Park, Member of this committee.
Councillor Dawn Dale, councillor for Shire Green and Brightside, and Chair of Education, Children and Families Policy Committee.
Frembele Bin, councillor for First Park Ward, and Deputy Chair of the Committee.
Councillor Ben Miskel, Chair of Transport, Regeneration and Climate, and councillor in Park and Alberton Ward.
Sophie Thornton, councillor for Beechfield and Greenall Ward, Deputy Chair of Adult Health and Social Care Committee, and substituting for councillor Otten today.
Commissioner Mohamed Eklesal Ward.
Curtis Crossland, councillor for Baiton Ward, and Chair of Communities, Parks and Leisure.
Martin Smith, I'm Chair of the Economic Development, Skills and Culture Committee, and also a councillor for Dorantotley Wood.
Good afternoon. My name is Diane Hurst, and I'm an elected member for Richmond Ward.
Thank you very much. As the officers do introduce themselves, starting on my left, thank you.
Afternoon, everyone. My name is Claire Taylor, and I'm the Chief Operating Officer.
Hello, I'm Meredith Teasdale. I'm Strategic Director for Children.
Kate Joseph, Chief Executive.
Robert Parkin, Assistant Director of Legal Services.
Craig Rogerson, Democratic Services.
Philip Gregory, Director of Finance and Commercial Services.
Kate Martin, Exec Director, City Futures.
Thank you very much, everybody. So, apologies for absence, as councillor Thornton has said. Councillor Otten is not able to attend today, and Sophie is substituting. And councillor Smith?
Yes, apologies in advance, Chair. I have a personal commitment. I need to leave probably slightly early, depending on how the meeting progresses. Thank you.
Thank you. And yes, councillor Iredencio was also indicated she's got to leave slightly early today. Thank you. So, Item 2, just to confirm, there's no items on today's information. Item 3, declarations of interest. Are there any members who wish to declare an item, an interest in any of the items of business on the agenda? Thank you. Item 4, minutes of previous meetings. Can I ask members to approve, as a correct record, the minutes of the meeting that we held on the 30th of May? Thank you very much. Item number 5, public questions and petitions. There are 30 minutes available for this item, so if I could ask the questioners to breathe as brief as possible in their question, so we can make sure we get through everybody in time. As I mentioned, we've received questions from six members of the public today, and our first question is from Ada. Ada, do you want to come up to the front desk? Thank you. And then, on the microphone in front, the right-hand button, if you press that, the red light should go on. There we go.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ada. I'm pleased to have this opportunity, and my question is following up from the CCTV, following with my second email inquiry to the FOI, freedoms of information, on 3rd of June, of this, asking about the name of manufacturer of the CCTV, and where the CCTV are made, are used in our pub and government buildings. As well as my pub questions, I was asked last, I asked last Wednesday, on 17th of July, at the Sheffield Council meeting, regarding the concerns of the potential cyber security threats associated with the CCTV being used in the pub and government building in Sheffield. And one of the, one of the main concerns is the creation of the backdoor channels by the Chinese manufacturers to the Chinese government to remote assist data, and I'm going to follow up with that question in this meeting. Firstly, I would like to thank you, councillor Tom Hunt, for the very positive response at the Sheffield Council meeting, where his day one of the consideration was the replacement of the existing CCTV at the end of the product life. But however we know about waiting for the end of a product life can be a couple of years or decades, but how about our challenges, I would say it's really, really imminent. So I would like to share with all of you some information that may assist us to identify a potentially more effective way to deal with the CCTV issue, and I'm here, will look forward to hearing from the committee about any specific timelines, timetable, and the implementation plans. If you look at inside a CCTV, there's an NVR, we call it network video recorder. That recorder is records, of course, records video data transmitted from the CCTV and stores it in a format that can be assisted later. The function of NVR, which means the network video recorder, is to transmit data and images, and can assist data and monitor the terminals through the network. Of course, our really optimistic approach will be we replace all the CCTV in a timeline and ensure there's no risk. But however we know, from a really financial sense, financial considerations, can I ask here the Sheffield Council to look at into any ways, just replace this component, the NVR, because it's key, because this one, if we change it, this NVR can cut off the data transmission or the uploading and any downloading activities by unauthorised parties, which mean we can shut down the back door. So can we try to source the NVRs from local supplies or from other countries, so we can address the potential risk, we can avoid it, from the products associated with the Chinese government? This is my question today, and thank you for listening. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming today and for asking the question. We've communicated with you by email over the last couple of days to let you know, and I've shared this with everybody today, that due to the quite technical nature of the question, officers here will need to properly investigate the issues that you're raising, and so it's not possible for me to provide a full verbal response today, but we will follow up in due course with a full written response, and I'll make that available to members of the committee as well.
Okay. Can I have any, like to know what's the next step or your investigation or the process or route to look at into this kind of issue?
I think what will happen is that officers who deal with our CCTV will look at the issues, the technical issues that you've raised today, and will need to give it proper consideration, but I can commit that we will come back to you with a full written response. And if, of course, there are further questions, then we will deal with those further questions. But we will come back to you in writing, but I really appreciate you coming today and raising this with us.
Okay. Hope we will work it out together. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. So, the second question today is from Clara Chung.
I think it's fine.
Hi there. Yes, that's, that's, microphone is on. Thank you.
Thanks for having me here. Hi again. So first of all, thanks councillor Tom Hunt, for your response last week about the inquiry about the, our sister city's relationship with Chengdu, and today I would like to follow up a bit about the topic of facilitating cultural exchanges with the Early Ring Convent Church in Chengdu. And I think it is actually important for me to provide more context, for you to recognise that it is not realistic to really expect residents of Sheffield to directly contact the church's people, because the People's Republic of China, PRC, does not really afford its citizens religious freedom, and under its ambiguous national security law, any engagement with foreign individuals could be, you know, interpreted as subversion. This is the situation in China, unfortunately. And this church has been under surveillance because of the, because Pastor Wen has been really nicely gathering people to share their religious belief on Christianity. And yeah, because of that, he's in jail. I will also give some updates about Pastor Wen a bit later. Yeah, so one safe and feasible way actually to facilitate cultural exchange with Christian groups in Chengdu would be actually for Sheffield Council to communicate directly with the government. So with the Chengdu government's endorsement, then the church can feel safe to communicate with the outside world. So this is the reality, I need to provide this context for your consideration. And additionally, I would like to update you on the situation of Pastor Wen Yi from the Early Ring Convent Church in Chengdu. So based on an online article by Church in Cheng, dated 26th June 2024 this year, despite his arrest five years ago, there are no official channels for the outside world to learn about his situation. So the article actually writes, Wen Yi has only been permitted one family visit since his wife, since he was detained, and this visit was from his wife in October 2021. His parents, now in their 80s, have been under surveillance since December 2018, and are only allowed to walk around their local community. And Wen's parents have been permitted to see Wen's wife only once a month under surveillance. So Chengdu National Security Police Officers have also carried out a raid on their home, during which they made the elderly couple stand at attention for an extended period. So given these distressing circumstances, I hope the Sheffield Council actually can help by asking Chengdu authorities for an update on Pastor Wen Yi's situation. And with all these contacts today I provide, I hope that Sheffield Council can take a more proactive initiative. Can you please ask our sister city's government, Chengdu government, about Pastor Wong Yi's current status? And then can you, Sheffield Council, please invite Early Ring Convent Church to have a cultural, to have cultural exchange? And perhaps I know in prison, exchange would be really difficult because of the expense, but how about online cultural exchange? Would something like this be feasible at all? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for joining us today and for raising this issue with us again. Now, let us be clear, freedom of speech and freedom of expression are fundamental human rights that everybody should have, and so I therefore take the concerns that you've raised very seriously, as I know that people right around this committee and throughout the council do, and I recognise that we, of course, wouldn't want to take any action that put people in jeopardy. As I said in my response to your question for council last Wednesday, we will need to take some, to undertake some inquiries of our own before deciding how best we can act, and we will take some time to do this. But what I can confirm is that since we last spoke, the council has already had a call with the China lead at the UK's Foreign, Commonwealth and Development Office about the issues that you've raised, and that they agreed to inquire as to whether or not there are any available updates that can be shared, and I will keep you updated when there is further information provided to us. So thank you again for joining us. Our third question today is Annie O'Gara.
The Sheffield City Council's Code of Conduct says this, quote, "This code of conduct applies to you as soon as you sign your declaration of acceptance of the office of councillor or attend your first meeting as a co-opted member, and continues to apply to you until you cease to be a councillor or a co-opted member," end of quote. It says that the code applies to councillors when acting in an official capacity. Can the Chair of this meeting confirm that? The Code of Conduct applies to all councillors present at this meeting today, and that he will ensure that respectful and non-discriminatory speech is used in line with the Nolan Principles and with clauses 1.1 and 2.3 of the council's own Code of Conduct, which seeks to apply those principles.
Thank you very much for your question, for joining us today. The council's Code of Conduct applies when councillors are acting in their capacity as councillors of Sheffield City Council. That is a statutory requirement of the Localism Act 2011. Councillors are each individually responsible for complying with the Code of Conduct. Committee chairs are responsible for maintaining the audibility of proceedings, which I tried to do, and I look forward to the support of councillors in doing that today. All the members around here represent different committees, and I know that, looking around, they will join me in making sure that that is applied. Thank you very much.
So it does apply to members of this committee?
The Code of Conduct applies when councillors are acting in their capacity as councillors, and it applies in official proceedings such as this.
That's a very, very helpful answer, Tom. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our fourth question today is Calvin Payne.
Okay, thank you, everybody. My first question is that on December 21st, 2023, this committee heard the council report, the halfway report into the progress following the LowCOC inquiry recommendations. In the minutes, it can be seen that the committee requested a further update on the implementation of the recommendations at the meeting in July 2024 today. Can the Leader of the Council confirm if and when that update intends to happen?
Do you want to ask your second question as well? And then I'll give a reply to them both.
Yep. And connected to this, many of the personal apologies originally promised to be made by the council by the end of October 2023, including to those of us most affected by the issues raised by Sir Mark, are still outstanding eight months, nine months later, despite being again promised in the report on December 21st, 2023. And if I can just use my own example, I, it is one year ago this week that I last met with Legal and Governance Department. I was asked to submit my requested wording request for a personal apology. I did so in September 2023. I think it's time that email was answered, councillor Hunt. So can you please update on the progress being made, or the lack of it, towards completing the apology process?
Thank you very much, Mr Payne, for your questions. The update report on the inquiry recommendations is due to come to the S and R committee meeting in August. With the exception of the apologies to be given to the group of people referred to as the undertakers in this context, it's my understanding that all personal apologies recommended in the LowCOC report or requested through the agreed process set out in the S and R report in June 2023 have been made. But as I know you will understand, the apologies to the undertakers have not yet been completed because there is an outstanding complaint which needs to be resolved before the apologies can be given. An independent review has been commissioned in relation to that complaint, and this is due to reach its conclusion shortly. The apologies to the undertakers will then be completed as soon as practical after the independent review report has been received. Okay, I'm not part of that complaint, but yes. Thank you. The next question is from Hillary Smith.
You won't be surprised that I have serious concerns about the content and the recommendations in the report on the stand with Palestine petition that's going to be considered today. I wish to ask that the council's response to the petition needs to be reconsidered afresh in the light of the ruling of the International Court of Justice on Friday. The World Court has determined that Israel is practising the crime of apartheid, and this finding should lead Sheffield City Council to reconsider its reluctance to accept the designation of Israel as practising apartheid against the Palestinian people. I recognise that the report was written before the ICJ ruling, but I had in any case serious concerns about the tone and the assumptions in the report. For example, point 1.4 frames the report, the whole report, in a way which suggests that the language of genocide and apartheid is not legitimate. The report falsely gives the impression that it is only Amnesty that has determined that Israel is practising apartheid. And I note that nothing in our petition's wording suggested that the report by Amnesty was the only human rights organisation which designated Israel as a state practising apartheid. For the avoidance of doubt, and in case anyone here is not aware, the following organisations have come to this conclusion: Al-Hak, Bet-Salem, Human Rights Watch, and no less than four successive and current United Nations Special Rapporters for the occupied Palestinian territories. So the council has no need to conduct its own investigation into whether or not Israel is practising the crime of apartheid unless it chooses to reject the findings of every one of these internationally respected human rights organisations. The report takes a completely negative view of any step, however minor, that the council might take towards making Sheffield a city free of complicity with Israel's apartheid. The report is excessively legalistic and risk averse, a classic yes-minister approach, which I hope and expect that you as councillors will today question and challenge. Do not collude with the implications of the report, that you have done everything you need to, and that your responsibilities are ended. That's not the case. Sheffield City Council could decide to leave no stone unturned to find ways to reduce its complicity with Israel's apartheid state policies and practices. The report rejects any possible steps that could be taken, suggesting that because a step might be difficult or need careful thought, that it should not even be considered. So the author of the report now needs to reconsider, in the light of the findings of the President of the International Court of Justice, the highest court in the world, that Israel is practising the crime of apartheid. And I look forward to hearing each of you, members of this committee, making a robust rejection of the report's recommendations today. You are politicians, and you have a duty to act according to the highest ethical standards. The Palestinian people and respect for international law deserve nothing less. I'm aware that the Leader of the Council will be responding to my question, but I address my question to each of you on this committee and to the Chief Executive. Each of you carries a heavy responsibility to ensure that Sheffield City Council plays its part, however small, in ending UK support for Israel's system of apartheid. So I ask you today to reconsider the council's response to the position in the light of the ruling of the International Court of Justice.
Thank you very much, Hillary, for joining us today and for your question. All of us have been moved by what we've seen in Gaza over the last nine months, and I think all of us would repeat our call for an immediate end to the violence and for urgent ceasefire, who have been calling for in this place since November last year. The thrust of your question is about a report that is on the agenda for later in our meeting, so it will be important for me not to predetermine my response to that report being discussed later, or to suggest a position on behalf of the committee. And when I give answers, I give them on behalf of the committee, so given that we are discussing it later, I can't predetermine that response. But at this point, I will invite Robert Parkin to advise the committee on whether the ICJ judgment impacts on the recommendations in the report.
Thank you, Chair. So the report is designed to explore what legal options within the legal framework that the council operates within are available to the meeting today as recommendations from officers, and as such, it takes, it takes matters that have a direct impact legally as a direction on local authorities, so may read as being restricted in that sense. I'm clear that the recommendations, Chair, that are formulated and presented to you today are lawful ones, that are open to the committee to adopt or not, and that it explores the issues around those options in a comprehensive fashion, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. So we will discuss this when we come to Item 9 on the agenda today.
Just remember that this is advice, this is advice, and you as politicians can choose what to do.
Thanks very much, Hillary. The next question is Jonathan Feldman.
Thank you, everybody. So just to give some context and remind you of the clear commitment of many, many Sheffield citizens in the lead-up to this report, seven thousand, over seven and a half thousand Sheffield citizens signed it. At the time of the signing, there was about 35,000 people had been killed in Gaza, and the horrors, as you, Tom Hunt, have just mentioned, have continued. Recently, a Lancet report reported that possibly 186,000 people have been killed directly or indirectly as a result of the onslaught by Israel on Gaza. And this morning, I received a message from Mashir Al Farah, Sheffield-based Palestinian, who was trapped, as I'm sure some of you know, in Gaza with his son for several weeks at the start of October. Before he left, he was able to gather around him an amazing team of brave volunteers who would distribute food, clothing and sanitary products, and sometimes money, to enable people to have dignity in the face of the terror. And he's wrote to me to say, "I'm sorry for not reporting earlier than this. I lost contact with the team due to the intense air and land attacks by the Israeli army on Con Yunnis County, which resulted in the displacement once again of thousands of civilians from the east of the town and the killing of hundreds. I can report that 224 families have received food parcels and cash support, 73 families received powdered milk and nappies. This brings the total number of families who received our support from Sheffield to The children in the photos are the youngest of my beloved Basil and Ayama, brother and sister volunteers who insist on helping the team with the packaging of parcels. I hope that no harm will come to them and the hundreds of thousands of Palestinian men, women and children. We have had enough trauma losing loved ones at the hands of the criminal Israeli army." Since he returned, I want you to know that citizens of Sheffield have raised and sent to Gaza nearly a quarter of a million pounds for this emergency relief fund. This is how much it means to them. So when I was asked by the Leader of the Liberal Democrats in this council, when I presented the petition, whether we thought it would bring peace, I can only say, I'm not as arrogant enough to think that anything that we do is going to bring peace. It's up to us as individuals to contribute to these sorts of supportive projects that I've just talked about, where we can, and up to you, as Hillary has just said, as political leaders, to create a climate of unacceptability, to say that you do not want to be associated in any way with the continued illegal occupation of Palestine and the injustices faced by Palestinian people.
Mr Feldman?
Yeah, I'm coming to my question.
I was just going to say, I know your question has a number of points, so if you could...
So that is the context, and there is another point to note, that support that we give... And there is another point to note, that support that we give gives resilience and added perseverance, or as Palestinian people would say. So in the report, and I'm pleased you mentioned the legal framework, Mr Parkin, in the report from the Council on the petition, it notes that the Council is not subject to international law, specifically that matters of international law and war crimes do not fall within the remit of English local government, nor are they issues over which the authority has any control, that is in paragraph 2.8. We should note that the invasion of Ukraine is widely considered to be against international law, as set out by Article 2.4 of the Rome Statute, and this did not prevent the rapid statement of support for Ukraine that came from the Council. The war is not a matter over which it had any control either, but one over which it decided could act locally to mitigate the terrible plight of Ukrainian refugees. We should also note that the International Court of Justice, in its advisory opinion of 18th July 2024, made in response to questions set by the General Assembly of the United Nations in December 2022, it states that "the Court considers that, in view of the character and importance of the rights and obligations involved, all states are under obligation not to recognise as legal the situation arising from the unlawful presence of Israel in the occupied territories. They are also under an obligation not to render aid or assistance in maintaining the situation created by Israel's illegal presence in the occupied Palestinian territory. It is for all states, while respecting the Charter of the United Nations and international law, to ensure that any impediment resulting from the illegal presence of Israel in the occupied Palestinian territory to the exercise of the Palestinian people of its right to self-determination is brought to an end. In addition, all the states' parties to the Fourth Geneva Convention have the obligation, while respecting the Charter of the UN and international law, to ensure compliance by Israel with international humanitarian law as embodied in that convention." And we should further note that in its ruling on 26th January 2024, the International Court of Justice found it plausible that there had been acts of genocide over which it had jurisdiction, and that Article 25.3d2 of the Rome Statute places responsibility on any individual who in any way contributes to the crime of genocide in the knowledge that there is the intention to commit that crime. It seems clear, therefore, that Sheffield City Council is a public body constituted under UK law, and that the UK is a party to the Rome Statute, giving its ruling status in UK courts. Inasmuch as this is the case, it seems Sheffield City Council is subject to at least this part of international law, and specifically the ruling of the ICC referred to above. And B, officers and elected officials are subject to international law because as individuals, they are obligated, as indeed we all are, not to aid and abet a crime against humanity, however indirectly and insofar as we are able. In view of this clear error in the report, will the Strategy and Resources Committee review the report? If not, why not? And further, as the Council has delegated authority from the UK government, that is the British States, and B, the ICC has said that states must avoid any aid or assistance to Israel. And C, the Rome Statute obliges natural persons to desist from aiding in any way, however indirectly, the crime of genocide. And D, the Council has a duty to protect its officers and elected officials from taking action on its behalf that could lead to their arrest. Will this committee move for the Council to engage proactively with the ruling of the ICC and publish a policy that ensures there is no official contact either with Israel or its representatives, or Israel institutions or their representatives, and discourage businesses and individuals within this city boundary from doing so too? And if not, why not?
Thank you very much, Mr Feldman, for your question and for sharing the testimony that you shared with us today. The report to be presented to the committee later on in the agenda has been prepared by the Council's officers and is aimed at providing the committee, all of us, with a framework of advice and guidance within which it may consider its options. I am advised that we place reliance on the primary legislative framework of the UK law, as set down by Parliament, to transpose international obligations into the context of local government law and to provide us with an operating framework. I am conscious, as I said before, that the report touches on questions of official and business contact, and I will leave therefore those matters to the discussion about the report later on our agenda. But what I can confirm is that the report, item nine on our agenda today, has been thoroughly checked. It has been reviewed by an external barrister to ensure that it is correct and it is free from errors.
I'm sure it has been checked, and I'm sure that some people would think it's free from errors, but on that particular matter about international law, it's significantly wrong. And I'm sure we could make, there's time to debate that.
Thank you very much for coming today. Really appreciate it. Thank you. Right. Thank you all for, everyone who's asked public questions today. Item six is member questions. There are no member questions that have been received today. Item seven is a report about the retirement of staff for Sheffield City Council, and I would like to ask everyone to join me in thanking those staff who have retired for their years of longstanding service to this council, and that we wish them all a very happy and long retirement. Are we all agreed? Thank you ever so much. Item eight today is our work programme, and for this, I will ask Craig Rogerson to just run us through a few matters that are arising. Thank you very much, Craig.
Thank you, Chair. Members have got the latest version of the work programme in their pack. There's a complete programme for the year attached as an appendix. I just want to draw members' attention to two elements of the report. Firstly, the new and amended items, including those added at the last meeting. They're on page 29. Subsequent to the agenda being published, we've just got a couple of more additions there. For the August meeting, we've got an extra item entering into a friendship agreement with the city of Nablus. And then for the November meeting, we've got the annual Ombudsman Report. And then secondly, can I draw your attention to a number of cross-cutting items that have been identified in other policy committee work programmes? They're on pages 29 and 30. The report contains proposals on what should happen with those items. SLB have looked at those and were asking SNR Committee if they're happy with that.
Thank you very much, Craig. Thank you for running us through that. Any questions, comments on those points that Craig has just highlighted? No, I don't see any indications, in which case then I will ask, are we all agreed with the work programme report setting out our work for the coming meetings? Thank you all very much. Indeed. Item nine is the response to the petition, which we've just been discussing in the final two questions, which is the petition that was debated first of all, full council back in March, which requested that the Council stand with Palestine. And the report was circulated last week, and hopefully members have had a chance to look at it. The presenting officers for this report will be the Chief Executive and Robert Parkin, Assistant Director for Legal Services. So with that, let me hand over to Kate and Robert.
Thank you, Chair. So and thank you, members, for hearing us here today. I'm presenting this report as the awful report James Henderson is on leave. So the report follows from the report agreed by Strategy and Resources Committee in February of this year, which set out the actions that the Council was taking in response to the ongoing conflict in Gaza. I want to take a moment on behalf of the Council and the senior leadership team to acknowledge and condemn acts of terror, awful violence on civilians, innocent men, women and children in Palestine and Israel, and acknowledge the impact this has had on communities in our city, as we heard earlier, as well as on the people, the innocent people in Palestine. And also want to restate our commitment as an officer team to support work with faith and community leaders and across our city, to support the actions that so many people are taking, to promote understanding, to reduce tensions, to demonstrate solidarity and to provide really practical support for those affected communities. And I wanted to make that point because I am very conscious that this is a very, very processy, legalistic report, and I am going to go into that part of it now. But I understand and we acknowledge it relates to a very, very serious issue which is affecting our world and our city. So the report's been brought in response to the petition brought by the Sheffield Coalition Against Israeli Apartheid, and that was referred to the Strategy and Resources Committee by full council. The report sets out recommendations for this committee to consider about the action that the Council can take in responding to the petition. The petition contains three elements. The first of those is a request for the Council to welcome the work of the International Court of Justice as it proceeds to try Israel for genocide and issue a statement saying that they stand in unity and solidarity with Palestinians, as the Council did with Ukrainians. This report notes that a cross-party statement of solidarity was agreed and published on the 25th of March 2024, and therefore recommends that no further action is taken on that part of the petition, as that has been delivered. The second element of the petition contains two separate requests. The first was for the Council to accept the Amnesty International designation, Israel's apartheid against Palestinians, a cruel system of domination and a crime against humanity. The report advises that this is not something the committee can agree to do for a number of reasons. The first reason is because the Council does not retain officers who are able to provide advice to elected members about the findings or recommendations of the Amnesty International report, and nor is it considered to offer best value to the authority to commission such advice. However, even if that advice were to be provided, none of the recommendations of that report are aimed at Sheffield City Council or English local government more generally, so it's very unlikely that any practical action could be taken as a result. And finally, the overall subject matter of the report and its recommendations cover an area of policy that elected members are not able to make a decision about, as it does not fall within the remit either of this committee or of the local authority more broadly. The second of the two requests in the second element of the petition is for the Council to declare Sheffield to be an Israeli apartheid-free zone, as the Council did with South Africa in 1981. This relates to a statement that the Council published in 1981 with a series of actions that it was taking in relation to demonstrate its opposition to the South African government's policies at that time. The report sets out in detail the current position, recognising that we are in a very different and significantly more restrictive legislative landscape in respect of the actions taken by the Council in 1981. The committee is asked to note that with one exception, none of those actions are ones that the Council may now legally take. The report does note that it is open to the Council to consider whether it wishes to invest in Israeli companies as part of its Treasury management strategy. In practice, the Council's exposure to Israeli government investments is... Sorry. In practice, the Council has no exposure to Israeli government investments, as the current strategy does not permit investment in countries with a sovereign credit rating of AA- or below, and Israel currently has a rating of A+. The current strategy also excludes investment in fossil fuels, tobacco, arms companies, or, to the best of our knowledge, companies involved in tax evasion or grave misconduct. The committee is asked to note that the Council's Treasury management strategy is updated annually, and is asked whether consideration of the issues raised in the petition should be included in the next annual review alongside other key considerations, including the public sector quality duty, best value duty and prudent financial management principles. The third and final part of the petition is to request a debate on the matters raised at full council, and this took place in March 2024, and therefore no further action is required on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, indeed. Thanks for setting that out and to officers for preparing this report, which, as you said, deals with some complicated matters of law. Right. I will now open the floor up to any members who wish to speak on this report. I've seen councillor Agencia.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to the officers who have put together the report. As, you know, as been said earlier in the questions, this is advice to us, and obviously officers cannot give us political advice, so I really appreciate how much work has gone into this. And yes, it is very legalised, but it's because it's got to be this way. The Chair will know my kind of stance on this, as we discussed this very report in the leaders briefing, and I think we can take a political stance and we can, you know, have a position on this, and I think we need to, especially in light of the latest judgments from the International Court of Justice. And it's just, are we brave enough to do so despite the legal constraints? Obviously, we have to take legal advice, but I think we can. As politicians, we have a duty to take a strong stance on this, as we did with Ukraine. Why is this case different? Is it because it's a different part of the world? Is it because it's more removed from us? I think we need to take a stance politically, and even the statement that we put together, how long did we agonise about the words, because we didn't agree on the words, all of us? And, you know, that was a compromise of cross-party administration. But I think because of the long history of Sheffield as a city that stands very strongly for human rights, we're talking about people's human rights, we're talking about so many people dying, and I really love the word conflict in it. It's kind of suggested there are two armies against each other. Is one army against, you know, a population that has no way to defend themselves? So I feel, you know, this is my view as a politician, I want to take a strong stance on this. And this is not to diminish the right of Israeli people to also live peacefully in their area, because there are lots of, you know, of Israeli people that don't agree with what's happening to Palestine and to Gaza. So I think if worded properly and sensitively, we can take a stance that legally will stand, but will also be in keeping with our long tradition of standing against injustice.
Okay. Thank you. And I think, you know, it is important to note that the cross-party statement that you referred to, I think, you know, members of all the leaders of the groups in the Council deserve credit for finding a way through some of those difficult conversations that we had to make sure that there was a representative cross-party statement on behalf of this Council which made it clear that we call for that immediate ceasefire and we do not support what is happening in Gaza. So that is available to have a look at on the website. As you say, it was published on 25th of March, and, you know, I think that was a good step forward. So other members who wish to indicate? Councillor Johnson?
Thank you. I just want to add just a few observations. So first, a risk of stating the obvious, people see what's going on in Gaza. You can't escape it. On the news, there is wide-scale coverage. It is stating the obvious. We've seen it. It's horrific. It directly and indirectly affects a huge number of people in Sheffield. It's relevant to Sheffield, and therefore it's relevant to Sheffield City Council as the elected leadership body in Sheffield. And it's important because it does affect tensions in the community, it affects equality, it affects communities and the understanding, the need to eliminate conflict, whether it's here in Sheffield or throughout the world. And it highlights our need for understanding that we need to be able to live with different viewpoints. But there are some things that are just so abhorrent that they, you know, will have to be recognised as... to be recognised as crimes and as war crimes. So, it takes me to the second point about international law and about the ruling of the International Court of Justice. So, on international law, and of course, actually in Sheffield City Council, we do have a slightly ambiguous relationship with international law. We're not the UK state, we're not the UK government, but equally we do, and we have commented on international, you know, relations. So, whether it's, for instance, yeah, this council's formal recognition of the state of Palestine, that's clearly going into an area of international law, as we've done with Kashmir, as we've done with Somaliland, you know, and these are actually quite contentious things. And even in this meeting, of course, we've talked, and thanks to the Chair, we've talked about, you know, how we might approach some of the concerns we have over the People's Republic of China and how we might encroach into the state mechanisms there. So, that's our relationship with international law. We are helped in some way now by cutting through this difficult dialogue with the fact that last Friday the International Court of Justice very clearly ruled that the state of Israel is perpetrating apartheid and that's an incredibly serious crime under international law and we can take note of that, that ruling is there. It's a clear judgment of the court, very well, very clearly argued. It's a full decision, it's not just a preliminary decision because we've all set a separate preliminary decision in January this year accepting, whilst the court didn't state that genocide was occurring, it sets out a plausible case for genocide by the state of Israel. That's the context, that's international law, that does affect us here too. So, next point on the legal side is that we also have to accept that this council is subject to the laws of the land as well as international law. The law has changed a lot since this council made the declaration against apartheid in connection with South Africa in 1981 and specifically there's the Act of Parliament under the Thatcher government in 1988 that was deliberately brought in to prevent councils from boycotting South African goods in short and that still applies now. What we do know, of course, is that the previous government just before this general election took steps to bring in a further bill that would encroach further onto councils' rights to take a stand on international issues. But that bill failed and in fact the whole government failed and is no longer there. So, because that bill failed, it means that, you know, those rights have not been taken away from us in local government. So, we do still have some room for manoeuvre. But it is, you know, beyond doubt and the legal advice are helpful, that those legal constraints are there. So, finally, on the question of leadership, as I said at the beginning, people in Sheffield see what's going on, they do expect Sheffield to take a stand and Sheffield City Council to take a stand as we've done with declaring the state of Palestine in the past. So, I would, my form would be happy to support a declaration that Sheffield becomes an Israeli apartheid-free zone, notwithstanding the fact that there are legal considerations. So, I think you would have to say it, legal advice is that we would have to express that insofar as the legal considerations permit. That does leave a bit of an open-ended question as to whether this is purely symbolic or just largely symbolic, but it's set out there as a political statement and a statement of leadership. So, I would support that and do that by recommending that we replace paragraph three of recommendation with a short statement to that effect. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Smith is the indicator, thank you.
Thank you Chair. I'm not a lawyer, so there are one or two aspects to this in terms of the legal advice that I'm sort of trying to process. Councillor Johnson said, forgive me if my interpretation's incorrect, please correct me, but the general advice is, from a legal point, we can't do this, but I think what Councillor Johnson said is we can insofar as the legal restrictions permit, but then I'm hearing that the legal side of things doesn't permit us to do it. Is there any chance you could clear up my confusion with perhaps a practical example? So, can this affect what we buy as a council? So, apologies if I'm confused, but as I said...
I think it's a really helpful point of clarification, thank you. I'm sure other people are thinking similar. So, with that, let me come back to Kate and Robert.
So, the report and the legal advice, which as we've said earlier in the day, we've taken council advice on as well, so we've sought an external opinion on this, says that making such a declaration that Sheffield is an Israeli apartheid-free zone would have no practical effect other than the point that's raised in the paper around the potential for us to look at our treasury management policy. So, that, it does mean that it is open, it's open to the council to, as a political act, to think about a declaration, but that isn't something that we have advised on because it would have no practical effect and it would be a political statement and that's because it is not appropriate for officers to advise proactively on a political statement. I don't know if you want to add, Robert?
Yes, that's quite right, Kate, thanks for that formulation. So, local authorities do adopt declarations which are expressions of political views and those wouldn't be things that officers would initiate for reasons that speak for themselves and Kate's explained that. Councillor Johnson has talked about reference to their essentially subject to legal constraints. That's something that again often features in these resolutions. One very important point though is a procedural requirement which we wouldn't be able to get around by the proposal on its own and that is under the Equalities Act, the equality imperatives require us to consider a number of things under the public sector equality duty around fostering good relations between individuals with protected characteristics. That includes race, which includes nation and nation of origin. If a resolution were to be to commission officers to come back, that would be accompanied by work to examine in more detail equalities matters and it may need to consider what contingent language needs to accompany a resolution such as around tolerance, et cetera. But those are things that we're not in a position to advise on today, Chair.
Excuse me, we need to make sure that at this point in the meeting, thank you, the members and officers have a chance to debate these matters. We have had a chance for public questions today, thank you very much. Councillor Nas and then Councillor Crossland.
Thank you. Thank you very much for bringing the petition a few months ago, but as a Donald Ward councillor, I'm here on behalf of my constituents and in line with my longstanding advocacy for the Palestinian people within this chamber. I deeply sympathise with the sentiments expressed by the petitioners regarding the ongoing humanitarian catastrophe in Palestine. I have marched with people here, I have spoken on the steps of the town hall at Pro-Palestine rallies and I will continue to bear witness to the slaughter of innocent men, women and children in Gaza. While I acknowledge the efforts of our officers in exploring various avenues, I must express my dissatisfaction with the contents of this report. It falls short in adequately scrutinising the role that our council plays in addressing this critical issue, but this is a legal document and we have been advised by legal that the council could not take no meaningful action. However, we must commit to a more thorough and comprehensive examination of our responsibilities and actions. I would like to see the council demonstrate how it plans to align its actions with international consensus and uphold respect for international law as confirmed by the highest court in the world, the International Court of Justice. The council will not and does not and cannot invest directly or trade within the occupied Palestinian territories. The ICJ issued its opinion and its conclusion and it's loud and clear, Israel's occupation of the occupied Palestinian territories is unlawful and break international law. I am however interested in Councillor Johnson's recommendation about a political statement. I think that as political parties, we can make political statements, but that's not what the petition asked us to do. So, you know, if we accept the report today, we can go back into our groups and amongst ourselves decide, you know, to put out a petition in line with what people in Sheffield want us to do. Because I'm not sure from what I'm hearing from the exec is that even if we did declare Sheffield an Israeli apartheid-free zone, that would only be symbolic and actually we wouldn't be able to do anything. Is that correct? If you could just confirm that for me again?
Just on that point, do you want to come back?
Yes, so, an expression of a political declaration such as that would have no impact on the functional activity of the council and its onward decision-making, it doesn't become a material consideration in planning matters or licensing matters. So, it doesn't have, it doesn't have practical effect in terms of the council's discharge of its functions, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Hopefully that's a helpful response, Councillor Nas. Was there more you wanted to say? No? Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Councillor Crossland and then Councillor Hurst.
Thank you Chair. I'm going to be honest, I have a lot of sympathy for this and I'm sure like lots of people in the room, I struggle watching the news with horrible images coming out, it is horrible. With my communities, parks and leisure hat on, I do, similar to Councillor Nas, I struggle with the practicalities of what we're being asked of today because on page 10 it says, instruct the city libraries and schools not to make available Israel government propaganda. How would that work in practice? Would I as Chair of the libraries get to sort of censor what's in our libraries? How would, what would the practical implications of that be?
Let me just answer that directly by saying, you know, where that statement is made, at the bottom of page 10 in the report, is followed by the statement at the top of page 11 which says, you know, for the reasons that are set out in the report, this is not something that would be currently permitted for Sheffield City Council to do in relation to Israel and Palestine. So, that is not a scenario that you or others would be put in.
So, Councillor Nas was correct in the fact that while we might have a lot of sympathy for what the petition is asking for, in practical terms, it won't really have much effect on what we do.
That is the question that Councillor Nas asked and as Robert said, yes, the thrust of what you're saying is correct here. Thank you, Councillor Hurst.
Thank you Chair. I struggle with this because I'm not a lawyer. I felt the emotional impact of what we see on the television and I have sympathy for people who have family members there and who are, yeah, who will be impacted by what's going on. But I struggled to see that we can do anything now under the legal framework in which we operate that would in actual fact be anything further than what we have done already, which is issue a joint statement from all the groups in the council that was agreed, the wording of which was agreed. I also struggle because of our responsibilities to promote good relationships between people of different, you know, our responsibilities under the Equalities Act and the promotion of good relationships. And I think the actions of the Israeli nation-state, if we did something that would affect only Israeli nationals, then we'd be impinging on that. So, we want Sheffield to be a place where all peoples of all cultures, race, religions can feel welcome and I don't, I think we have to. What I'm thinking is that we have to accept this report, but perhaps as politicians, go back to that original statement and just see if there is any way that we would want to revise that or if we think as a reaction to the situation as it then stood, is it adequate? But I think we have asked for legal advice when, well, I'm not a lawyer, I have to accept that. And I think that all we can do as politicians is revisit our original statement.
Thank you very much, Councillor Hurst. I've got Councillor Bellbin and Councillor Thornton, I will come back in a second. Can I see if anyone else who hasn't spoken wants to come in? Okay, so, I'll come, Councillor Bellbin, Councillor Thornton, Councillor Mohammed and then I will come back. Thank you. Councillor Bellbin?
Thank you. Thank you to officers for the report and to the questioners as well for bringing the questions earlier. I know we have been exploring how we can best respond to this for quite some time and I know Hillary, you and I have had conversations about this quite early on in the process about what the council can meaningfully do to contribute anything positive to this horrendous situation. I think the conversations that I've heard so far seem to imply that, yes, politicians can make political statements, I don't think that's, you know, there's no question about that and obviously lots of us as politicians and as groups have done so, but my understanding from the report is that, you know, whatever political statements the council has put out, you know, it will make very difference to what we can do in practice. But I think what I would say is, A, I'm pleased to see, I think there's been a bit of a shift in terms of new government and where we are going, the fact that the funding has been restored to UNRWA, the fact that Keir Starmer has already been out and pressed for the case for an immediate ceasefire with the Israeli government, I'm pleased to see those things happening. And I think we can also look at what, I think we can do, that it states in this report, is take the opinions that the ICJ have come out with and make sure that we are applying those to our ethical procurement and ethical investment policies and I think they are practical things that we can do. And I think there was stuff in the work plan around where we can, where we will start to take those decisions. So, I think in terms of international law, you know, we can recognise that the ICJ is the arbiter, if you like, on international law. It might not be for the council to make those decisions, but we can use the decisions and the statements that are being produced in the ICJ in order to influence the things that the council actually can take action on. And I think on that basis, I'd suggest we accept the report, make sure that we are working towards those decisions around ethical investment and procurement, but by all means, you know, politicians can continue to make statements on this as they have been doing.
Thank you very much, Councillor Bellbin. Councillor Thornton?
Thank you Chair. I think that the situation is obviously crushing and it's crushing for all of us to see it on the news. I'm often taken back to my own visit to the West Bank and thinking about the people that I met there, whether that was the guide that was stuck at the border for hours before he could take us through or the man who picked me up and put me on the back of his camel in Jericho and paraded me around the car park or the Palestinian tourism police that kept people safe in Bethlehem. You know, my heart hurts to think about how they might be caught up in this and then it's even in Gaza, they're in the West Bank. It's obviously an extremely emotive issue and we need to deal with this with the utmost sensitivity. When we come to actually practically deciding what we're going to do today, I don't think that any of us are meaning for that to be against our own personal support for Palestinian people and their statehood. That's not, from what everyone else has said, I don't think that's anything that anyone's against. In terms of the practicality of it, you know, we've kind of said that the declaration in and of itself won't, even if we had, insofar as legal advice would permit to the end of it, wouldn't really have any practical input. But in terms of, you know, influencing other bodies like the investment decisions of the pension scheme, I think we touched on it a bit anyway, but would that declaration allow any influence over that? I'm assuming the answer is probably no, given the previous discussion, but I think that it's something worth asking in terms of our influences, whether we can directly influence decisions of the pension scheme given any sort of declaration. And again, when it comes to reflecting what Councillors Bellbin and Councillor Nas have said, I think that... I think that this, we have to go on the recommendations that are in front of us when it comes to reports. If we're wanting to make another political statement, then we can do that. Um, and we can do that amongst ourselves as groups. But when we're looking at the actual decisions that we've got in front of us today, that's separate rather than, um, in addition to, rather than including of, so. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, Councillor Thornton. We'll come back to officers in a second. We just take, uh, Councillor Mohammed.
No, I'm sorry, wrong one. Yeah, thank you, Chair. I mean, look, none of us, you know, have any joy to see what's happening in the Middle East. You know, it, it's an issue that's been going on for decades, it's not just since the 10th of October. And clearly, you know, Jonathan's right, that there are some practical things that we can do. And there were things that the city has done. Um, the mosque that myself and Councillor Nas' family go to, we raised a substantial amount of money. When I say we, the community, not us individually, our families and friends contributed to it. And it's probably part of the huge amount that Jonathan's referred to, and that's something we can practically do. And community have come up to us and asked us, you know, why can't Sheffield Council stop the war? And we've been honest with them. I have been very, very honest with them and said, look, you've got to understand what our remit is and what our role is. We are here as a local authority delivering local services. We do not have really a foreign, a fair spokesperson as such. That's the remit of the government. Yes, we can write to the government and we have done, Chair. We've also issued statements, joint statements, but no, let's be honest, I've been issuing statements for the last six, seven weeks. When people have asked me on the doorstep in terms of what our positions have been, you know, from a Lib Dem point of view, we absolutely wanted a ceasefire in November twenty, twenty-three. We want sausages released, but we also want humanitarian aid. And we want actually those people that may well have committed war crimes to be before the International Criminal Court. North Norboots, but that's, our position's been very clear. But we're now here as Sheffield City Council and we've got to operate within the law. And people talk about nineteen eighty-one, absolutely, yeah, nineteen eighty-one was a long time ago. In nineteen eighty-one, I could sit, if I could technically, I probably wasn't, I could sit in front seat, front seat of a car and not wear a seatbelt because the law didn't apply then, it applied after. And the law changed in nineteen eighty-eight and people got to understand that. And since then, it's become much more difficult to do what may have been done in nineteen eighty-one. And we've got to be honest and straight with people. Look, I'm from a Kashmiri background and I'll tell you what really struck me when I went, not as a typical councillor, but as a member of the European Parliament to Kashmir in July twenty nineteen. And we went near the border with a line of control between India, Pakistan. And I met a group of women who are Kashmiris. And they said to me, we really want to work with you. For too long, we've been used as a political football, both locally and nationally, for people to play their political games. And actually, we've never, we're the ones that we've lost out. And we believe in you because you're one of us. You're one of us and you're not going to play these games. You're not going to offer us hope where there isn't. And I said to them, I'll be honest with you, European Parliament can only go so far. This is a UN issue and seriously, I've always been honest with people. It might not be popular, but I'd rather be honest and straight with people. And I'm not going to play political games with this issue. I absolutely want to see the people of Palestine have their own freedom. I've been here on the streets with my own children, whether colleagues behind me remember it or not, two thousand nine, fourteen, et cetera, with my own kids. We've been there right at the front. We've always wanted it, I still want it, and I believe that Palestinians have a right to their own state. And we as a party are campaigning for it, I think everyone in this room wants it. So let's be clear, when we go away from here, we are bound by law, what we can do and can't do. Not only have, have we had legal opinion from within the council at considerable cost to the taxpayers of this city, we've had to go out and get legal advice. And I just say to my friends behind me, if you still think that advice is wrong, then I said to you, Jonathan, privately last time, and I'll say it to you publicly now, challenge it then. If you're saying that offices of this council are wrong, when the leading barristers of this, of this land is wrong, then you challenge it. Because I've pushed it as far as I can, I've pushed the offices in this council. I've also pushed for that external advice and it keeps coming back with the answers that you probably don't like. And if you think genuinely that this is wrong, then I say to you, Jonathan, as a friend, then you challenge it outside this body now. Because we've taken this as far as we can go within the law that it stands. If the new government changes the law or repeals what was pushed in nineteen eighty-eight, maybe we'll be in a different world game, but we're not, Chair. So I, with a heavy heart, will have to stay within the law and what the remit of this council is. Happy to make political statements outside as a leader of the Liberal Democrats, just as you, Tom Hunter, as leader of the Labour Party, and you, Douglas, as leader of the Green Party. But we're sat here, we're sat here as a committee and that's what we stand for.
Thank you very much, Councillor Mohammed. I've got, I'm going to probably suggest that I draw a line unless I see anyone else after Councillor Agenzio and Councillor Caillou. There was a question, a specific question that was asked about the pension investments. I've given answers at full council about this, this, this body, this council is not able to direct uh the South Yorkshire Pensions Authority because it is a legally separate um au- authority. And members of this council who are selected to repri-, to be representatives of this body on the South Yorkshire Pensions Authority act independently and we are not able to direct them in their investment decisions. I don't know whether, Robert, there's anything you want to add further to that?
Chair, that's covered it comprehensively, they're a, a, a separate statutory corporation, they're governed by their own policies and governance and decision making.
Thank you, Councillor Agenzio.
Um, thanks, Chair. I just wanted to come back about um the, um, the, the amendment and the suggestion to um take it back and change the wording of that part three. Um, because I, I still think that as politicians, I disagree, we cannot just stay, it's very normal when we have recommendations in a report that we bring amendments, change wording, that happens in every single committee. So why would this one be different? All of the reports are advice from officers, but we make political decisions all the time and we change and amend some of the recommendations in committees all the time. So why would we not do this in this case? Um, and I think although we will not have no practical bearing of how we operate the council and the officers have given us advice that they are allowed to give us as officers, not politicians, we can still make a political decision and have a statement that is symbolic but really important because a, a large petition was brought to this council. Um, and it's very important to our communities, worded carefully so as to not, you know, have an impact on cohesion.
Okay, thank you very much, Councillor Agenzio. Uh, finally, uh, before we move to draw, uh, to look at the recommendations, Councillor Caillou.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, Chair, without wishing to repeat everything that's been shared around the, around the room, uh, by colleagues, um, I just want to echo, you know, what people have said, particularly my colleague, Councillor Nas, with whom I've been um working very closely, taking practical steps and making statements on this issue since it started way back in October. In fact, the both of us, uh, in November stood in this very chamber and, and, you know, some made, spoke very powerfully about the need for a ceasefire at a time when the death toll was about eight thousand. That death toll now has risen to, risen to forty thousand. And so you can see or you can understand how strongly we feel and how far we've been impacted by what's been going on uh in, in Gaza. And beyond that, not just ourselves, but our families and our communities, particularly myself and unsure others as well, and our families, friends have been hugely directly impacted and continue to be impacted by what's going in there. And we want nothing less than what's going on uh in there to, to cease immediately. Uh, I for one, uh, say to the, the petitioners that I, first of all, I thank you and I applaud you for showing your dedication and commitment to this cause and doing everything in your power to bring this to the attention of the council and, and this committee and to try and get the council to do whatever steps they can do or whatever steps they can take uh on this issue. And for myself, um, both in my personal capacity and in my capacity as a councillor, as far as I can, I will continue to take every step to stand with you and to speak with you on this issue uh as far as I possibly can. However, uh, with my councillor hat on, uh, I need to balance that against the, the, the need for our, uh, for the council and, and my fellow councillors to seek legal advice as and when it's necessary to do so. And once the advice is received, um, to be, to abide by any constraints that the advice places on us. So with, with a view to that, uh, I'd like to say that obviously much as I would want to do as much as I possibly can to further your cause, uh, I still have to uh look at the, the legal advice and, and stand by that as it stands at the moment. And therefore I would support this report. Thank you.
Very much, Councillor Caillou. Um, and I, I don't think there's any further points to come back to officers on, but let me just say, you know, a heartfelt thank you to colleagues who have spoken today and to add my thanks to the petitioners for, for raising their voices on this issue and to people who've joined us here to hear the debates and to ask questions earlier on. I think you have heard today, you know, the, 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 you know, the deep uh impact that this has had on many people around this, all of us in this chamber, the, and the heartfelt um words that people have said reflect the, the the way in which this shapes all of our lives over the last nine months since October the seventh. And for many years before, this is a longstanding uh matter that people in this chamber and beyond have campaigned on. And I know that, you know, will continue to raise their voices until there is uh an end to the violence and until people can live their lives free uh with dignity and, and justice. And I know that, you know, as politicians in our groups and individually, I'm sure that we will continue to raise our voices in the way that we have today and over the last few months and however long it is necessary for us to be speaking out on this matter. I think it's been a helpful, constructive debate and I'm grateful to the officers for, you know, drawing out points of clarification when required. Colleagues, we have some recommendations in front of us. Um, and I think it's important that we, we now just turn to them. So I'm asking, are colleagues willing to accept the recommendations that are put in place ahead of us?
So I've proposed an amendment to that, can I just summarize that?
Councillor Johnson, I haven't seen an amendment.
Yeah, I've just told, told you what it is. So should I just say, so the amendment is to replace paragraph three of recommendations with the declaration um that, the declaration of a Israeli apartheid free zone um insofar as legal considerations allow. So that's the amendment.
Please, thank, thank, thank you very much for your comments, which was really helpful to have your questions earlier on. Um, so there is an amendment that has been proposed and seconded. Robert, from a, from a legal perspective, can I just, uh, ask the, the final words of that? Just repeat them again for me?
Oh, yes, um, so to replace paragraph three with a declaration that Sheffield is an Israeli apartheid free zone insofar as legal considerations allow.
Okay, so just to be clear, you are suggesting to delete three A, three B, three C and three D.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. So my advice to the committee is that the committee is not able to adopt that today because there is a procedural requirement by law under the Equalities Act to fully consider the equalities considerations. That's not something that can follow a decision such as subject to legal considerations. It has to be a contemporaneous thought process. Officers have not brought to today's committee that analysis. There are also some other things that we may need to shape into a resolution to meet the equalities imperative. So my advice today is, is that that's not a, a resolution that today could be accepted.
Okay, thank you, that's, that's clear then. So in which case we have the recommendations as set out, as we are set out in the report. And I suggest that we vote on those recommendations as set out in the report.
Sorry, no, um, yeah, we've got an amendment which has been proposed and seconded.
And I think what Robert is saying is.
Haven't we been told that's not possible to, to do that today? So how can you propose something that's not possible to do?
That, that's fine. If necessary, it could be, it could be deferred until the next meeting, so that work could be done. Um, or we could take the voluntary as it is, notwithstanding advice, you know, the options are open to us there. Um, so, so personally, I have no um problem with following the advice that's just been given to us. And that could be incorporated by um adding a further caveat, um, subject to further work as proposed by officers and fresh consideration by this committee at the next meeting.
Chair, can I say, considerable amount of officer time has been spent on this. Sophie was asking me how much barrister time is spent and I joked with her that it's not a hundred quid. You know, at the time, there's a report coming further down this agenda, Douglas, that talks about budget pressures last year being eighteen million and this year being thirty-one million. Forget an answer, we've been round this twice now. I really wish we could do more. I really wish we can, but we keep going round and you keep getting the same answer, but you don't like it, so you keep going round again. How many more times are we going to go round? Because we could do what you're saying, they could come back with something that doesn't satisfy you again. Do we go round again, paying barristers a lot of money? Is that the best use of our council taxpayers' money? That's what I say to you, when you have also acknowledged practically whatever we're asking for is going to actually mean nothing. Because you're asking us to not invest in Israeli companies, chief execs told you we don't invest in them anyway. So you're asking us to not do something we're not doing anyway. And the other things you're asking for to us to do, we can't legally do. What are we going to do here? I'm going back to what that young girl said to me in Kashmir. People in Kashmir and I suspect in Palestine are sick and tired of gesture politics. They want a practical change in life. And what I've said, what we talked about earlier with Jonathan, we can make some practical changes to people's lives by supporting them financially and stuff. But there's a limit to what we can do, Douglas, now it's up to you what you're going to do. But I'm, be honest with you, Chair, there's a lot of money here that's been spent on stuff going round and round in circles when we get the same answer each time.
Thank, thank you, Councillor Mohammed. So just to be clear, Councillor Johnson, you tabled an amendment, been told it's not going to be possible and you're now asking for a second amendment. Uh, and so far, you know, that, that is where we're at. I think, you know, the, the calls from Councillor Mohammed there are heartfelt and, and I, I share them. So I think, you know, we are in a place where, you know, it is, if you want to pursue this right now, then we can, you know, I think we'll, if you, I'm asking you to confirm what your intentions are right now.
Thank, thank you, yes. Um, so, so we've put forward an amendment, um, as, yeah, we find, and it's been seconded, so happy to have a vote. I think people have been fairly clear about where the sympathies lie in terms of this recommendation. Um, so we can have a vote on it, we don't need to go round the houses yet again. I thought we were going to end up in another round of speeches.
Chair, can I ask, is Councillor Johnson asking us to vote on something, to, to support something that is not legally possible?
Kind of just, sorry, just sorry to intervene, Chair, I just want to assist the committee. So um I understand that Councillor Johnson has proposed a change to the amendment. Um, we'd need to hear that in full before I could advise the Chair on whether that was um an amendment which was capable of, of achieving a lawful decision, otherwise it wouldn't be admissible. So I think that's probably the first step.
Briefly.
Yes, fine, so um the words are set out before with replacing paragraph three with declaring Sheffield an Israeli apartheid free zone insofar as legal considerations require and subject to officers' advice of any further work that needs to be done and further discussion before this committee. I think that addresses the point that you were making there.
Okay, Chair, I'm. Who are you going to go to, Robert, and then we're going to draw a line here, thank you.
So Chair, um, my advice is that still falls foul of the concern I raised before that any decision, putative decision today to make a declaration appears is the, is an immediate act and it is not supported by the procedural requirement that the law requires that at the time of the decision, it is accompanied by um advice in clear detail on the equalities imperatives. So there's the same, I'm afraid, concern arises today.
Thank you, very, very clear.
Can I just say in practical terms, what Robert is saying is, we do what you said, Douglas, we're going to get sued.
Jaffa, thank you. So, Robert, very clear, so that means that we have the recommendations as unamended in front of us. And as Chair, I'm now going to move us to a vote on those recommendations, so.
I'm just saying, Tom, we have got, we have got an amendment put forward, proposed and seconded. People may not like it and it might have consequences, but. People may not like it and it might have consequences, but people can have the choice of voting against it or not. You can't pretend it's not been said.
The ruling is you don't have an amendment because Robert has just set out the reasons why. So I'm now going to move us to a vote on the recommendations as set out on page two of the supplementary report, item agenda number nine, the S and R, take the actions listed in one, two and three. Can I please see whether members agree those recommendations? Okay, is there any dissent? Okay, in which case, those recommendations are agreed. Thank you very much. Thanks very much for coming today. Really do appreciate, you know, thank you. Annie, Annie, thank you very much for coming today. Likewise, Hillary. No. Okay. Hillary, Hillary, are you staying for the rest of the meeting, Hillary? Okay, great. We'll just take a pause for one second. Thank you. So, Mark, just for the benefit of people who are watching at home, perhaps you could just introduce yourself briefly and then introduce the report briefly and we will move on to item ten. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Chair. So yes, I'm Mark Whitworth, I'm Service Manager for Sustainability and Climate Change at Sheffield City Council. So the report that you have in front of you now is the Strategy and Resources Committee climate statement, which was originally presented to the committee in December, following the publication of the council's first annual climate progress report, which was adopted at Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee earlier in November. At the time, it was presented along with seven other committee statements, which were subsequently requested to be returned to each committee for each committee to review and approve. As you all know, the climate emergency is one of the biggest challenges that we face as a city, as a region, as a country and as a global community. And from Sheffield's perspective and by no means unique to our cities, acknowledge that achieving net zero by 2030 is going to be extremely challenging. And this was set out in the publication of the annual climate progress report, which highlighted the scale of the challenge, as well as recognising that many other cities and towns across the country are in a similar position. The city is already suffering from the early impacts of increased floods, heat waves, which can also impact on our more vulnerable communities in an increased way. And the city is committed to take action to reduce emissions, as well as taking action to mitigate climate impacts such as increased rainfall and flood risk. The purpose of the statements is to enable each committee to respond to the annual climate progress report and to restate cross-party council commitment to taking action on what we need to address to address the climate emergency, adapt the city and the council to a changing climate and also to reduce emissions. The Strategy and Resources Policy Committee's role enables it to contribute to the council's net zero ambitions and adapt to a changing climate by taking decisions which ensure that the strategic direction of the council's taking climate into account will enable the committee to support the development and integration of climate action as a cross-cutting issue, enabling climate responsibility across the organisation, and also to consider a longer-term approach, particularly with regards to funding and finance, when some of the solutions that we maybe need to be looking at will take, require a longer-term approach in regards to delivery. Also to be working with the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee to take a proactive approach on climate leadership and to take a proactive approach to the management and mitigation of climate adaptation, because obviously there's significant financial and wider risks to the council. The breadth of the opportunities, there's a whole number of different areas that the council can be undertaking. And I think it's worth noting that the vast majority of actions that are required to tackle climate change will also benefit beyond reducing carbon emissions. And the content within the statements also draws attention to some of those wider social health and wellbeing and wider benefits that we have through delivering climate action. So just to summarise, the report itself contains six key actions for the committee to take action around. Working to take forward the city goals, noting that there is a goal specifically on green and resilient Sheffield, recognising the need for us all to act faster on climate and the environmental crisis. Delivering the council's plan 2024 to 2028, which sets out a clear mission for the council, but now obviously recognises clearly in there with one of the three policy drivers, the role of Planet, and recognising that we all have a role in reducing emissions and helping to create a more resilient Sheffield. The committee also has the opportunity to ensure that it develops the democratic committee governance and ensuring that climate continues to be integrated across all the committees. And within its role of overseeing, shared with the Finance Committee, but looking at the budget and the medium-term financial strategy, ensuring that the medium-term financial strategy and the budget take account of climate impact and consider wider and appropriate mitigation methods, measures. The cost of living crisis is still impacting on our communities and the council is providing support to a number of programmes, including energy efficiency advice through things like Warm Home Sheffield. And the committee are recommended within the report to consider and support other ways in which we can look at reducing energy costs, both for residents and businesses. And finally, on the point of exploring alternative funding and investment models that could support climate programmes, the committee have requested, in response to a motion for council, that officers prepare a report exploring the practicalities of issuing a local climate bond and have discussed that this report be brought to the committee later this year, and that report is currently in progress. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mark. I've seen councillor Misscall want to come in. Let's see if they don't want to. And councillor Smith. So councillor Misscall, councillor Smith, thank you very much.
And thank you for bringing the report today. I think we all know, because we invariably chair committees, that these climate statements are a really important sign of the leadership that we make in our committees when it comes to climate action. And I'm really pleased to say and see that actually the report acknowledges the need for that leadership. I think it also acknowledges the challenges that we as an authority face in meeting our net zero commitments and the vital nature of us doing so. And I think we will continue, no doubt, to discuss the climate emergency over the coming years. But one of those consistent barriers that we have faced as an authority and as a city is that quite clearly we have an ambition here in this space, but we haven't had that ambition that is matched in Westminster. I am heartened to see that we have a shift in approach when it comes to climate action in Westminster, which will hopefully fill that vacuum and that we'll be able to look forward to working with the new government in order to be able to deliver the climate action that the city needs. I think in my committee, we're moving forward at pace with the latest of our route maps and those route maps are a way that we operationalise the committee's statement of leadership. The latest one that we're producing is about our land, which of course brings together those who own and manage land in the city to help us decarbonise and reach our net zero commitments. Now, we all know, and I've had many discussions with colleagues on this committee, that we're mindful that time is really precious if we're to meet our net zero commitment. And therefore, it'd be really useful if you can elaborate a little bit further, and the report alludes a little bit to it, about those remaining route maps. And I think we've got a few coming up, haven't we, that span different committee areas? I think one on land use that I've talked about, we've got one on business and industry, one on what we eat, consume and throw away, and specifically how much more they're going to be concise, punchy documents that focuses as a city on the urgent actions that we need in order to be able to move forwards to reach our net zero goals.
Thank you very much, councillor Misscall. Councillor Smith?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the report, Mark. I do recognise, if you look at committee structure, that the majority of this sits with Ben and TRC committee, but I'm pleased with the action we've been able to take as part of economic development. And I think crucially, through a series of small grants and a small grant scheme for improving energy efficiency in community buildings, I think we're just doing a little small part in helping others take action as well. And I think that's probably the most powerful thing we can do as a council, to show leadership but also encourage others and give them the practical tools and advice they need to do that. And finally, if I may, Chair, I do apologise to the rest of the meeting. I do have to leave in a couple of minutes, but that's by no means a reflection on the importance of this particular topic. So thanks for the report.
Thanks very much, councillor Smith. And I think, you know, we are taking a one-council approach to our work to get to net zero. And I am sure that like councillor Misscall, councillor Smith, other committee chairs, deputy chairs could make similar remarks about the action that is being taken by each committee to help us in our journey towards net zero. What we are considering today is S and R's climate statement. So I see councillor Agenzio, and then I haven't got anyone else, so we'll come back to Mark at that point and then move to the recommendations. Councillor Agenzio?
Thank you so much, Mark, for the report. And I just want to comment from the point of view of social care in general, you know, although there is very little that we can do within that portfolio, being children or adults or, you know, in terms of public health, however, the impact of not doing anything would be felt most acutely by the most vulnerable, i.e. the people that we deliver social services to. And in terms of public health, obviously, that's our biggest challenge. So surely leadership is very important and we must remember that because not doing anything will impact on our most vulnerable people the most.
Thank you very much. And I think, you know, across all committees, that we could point to examples and, you know, the new care and wellbeing service is a very good example, where I think the fact that this is now a locality-based model and care workers are not travelling across the city, back and forth in between appointments, is a good way of reducing the amount of travel that's required and therefore contributing through that committee, but also to the way that we travel roadmap. So I think, you know, that's a good example of the cross-council approach that we're taking. Mark, I'll come back to you for some brief remarks and then we'll move to the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So just responding to each of those points as they were covered off, responding to councillor Misscall, so the route maps, the remaining route maps, as you've outlined, we're currently working on completing the Our Land or the Land Decarbonisation Route Map. And once that piece of work's concluded, as you say, we're looking at that being a concise piece of work, a punchy piece of work. There was a workshop that was held yesterday at Centre in the Park with external stakeholders from across the city and beyond to obviously gather views around the activity that's taking place and understand some of the various areas that we can work together to try and drive forward this agenda. The next piece of work that will follow on from that will be the other two remaining route maps. I think what we're looking at at the moment, having conversations with colleagues in other parts of the organisation, notably within Waste Management, around the potential to integrate some of the, what we use buy and throw away roadmap into the work that might be being undertaken as part of a refresh of the waste strategy. There's also some of the recommendations of reforming the basis of the sustainable food strategy. So ideally, that being embedded within other documents rather than creating a separate piece. And then the other piece of work which the team will be picking up immediately after completing the Our Land Route Map is the Business Route Map, the Business Decarbonisation Route Map. And that will be with close coordination, working closely with colleagues within economic development, within economy skills and culture. Again, picking up some of the points that councillor Smith referred to around some of the business support programmes, but also some of the other work which we are in the process of commissioning will feed quite significantly into that around the development of a local area energy plan. Because one of the things that that will be doing is discussing with businesses in the city about future energy needs and actually what the sorts of things are that are required in terms of infrastructure to enable that transition to take place. Some of the work that we've done last year with the University of Sheffield and the Combined Authority was around trying to develop a local industrial decarbonisation plan, again, looking at how we work with key businesses, key industry partners in the city to progress that and to do that at pace. So that's effectively the timing or the next steps in terms of delivering those two route maps. And I think the thinking very much is around having documents that are relatively short that drive up for that agenda and enable us to focus on the delivery of the actions that those will contain. I think the other point just to reflect on is on councillor Agenzio's point around social care is just to raise awareness of a piece of work which the team have developed, which was taken through our climate oversight board and endorsed by the climate oversight board as a piece of work which is a tool. So we're running workshops so that services will actually be able to look at their, in terms of their climate adaptation and actually the sorts of things that they need to be putting in place in terms of a change in climate. And obviously, from a social care perspective, that's a very important part, thinking about the vulnerable people that we're looking after and the need to make sure that if we are experiencing heat waves or other climate change incidents, that we're actually able to have those provisions in place. And it's a way of trying to start testing some of those and looking actually how services can think about the impacts of those changes in planning their work. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mark. And I think, you know, we've made sure that the council plan is underpinned by those three drivers of people, planet and prosperity. And, you know, we've made sure that that is a factor in all of our decision-making. And so, you know, in due course, as every decision comes forward through committees, we'll need to be mindful of our climate commitments. So thank you very much for coming today and for answering those questions and for colleagues who've contributed points in the discussion. So some recommendations on the back of the decision taken by S and R in December last year, the committee is recommended to consider and if not previously agreed, agree the respective statement to ensure that the proposed actions contained in the statement are reflected in the work programme. And as Mark has set out, they are indeed reflected in the work programme. Are colleagues happy with that recommendation? Thank you very much, Mark. Thank you, colleagues. Item number eleven, moving swiftly on, is the Future Sheffield Transformation Programme, the business case for change. And the presenting officers are going to be Claire Taylor and Tom Smith, who are asked to introduce themselves in a moment when they've come to the desk. Just for colleagues' awareness, Claire and Tom are going to now present items eleven and twelve, but we will take the recommendations for each separately because the two reports, while separate, are very interconnected and naturally flow together. So without further ado, Claire and Tom, perhaps you could just introduce yourselves briefly for the benefit of people watching at home and then introduce the two reports. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair. And thank you for having us here today to talk about Future Sheffield with two quite lengthy reports. And so I'm Claire Taylor, I'm the Chief Operating Officer, and I work alongside colleagues in SLB more widely to pull together the council's approach to improvement, development, transformation and change. And my colleague, Tom, is taking a particular leadership role within the customer experience work. So, Tom, did you want to introduce yourself?
Good afternoon, everyone. Yeah, I'm Tom Smith, I'm Director of Operational Services for the council and I'm leading the work around customer experience strategy.
Thank you. So the two papers in front of us today, items eleven and twelve, relate to a really significant piece of work around the long-term plans for the council's transformation strategy. And that's item eleven. And item twelve is the customer experience work. And it's a detailed development of the type of thing that we're talking about in the first paper, actually. So item twelve is a worked example of the types of work that you should be expecting to see over the coming months and years as we develop our plans for improvement across the organisation. And so what I wanted to do just very briefly was give a little bit of context, recognising that the papers are quite technical, a little bit dry, transformation often is. But I also wanted to set it in the context of the rest of the agenda for today as well. So item eleven is the scope and depth and breadth of the transformation strategy. Item twelve is where we're going with customer experience, which if you look at the operating model on page eighty, you can see customer experience and community engagement are two really key elements of our desired future state. Item thirteen, which a colleague is going to present in just a moment, unpacks that further, so you can really see how the council's coming together as one organisation and looking at its approach to community involvement and development. Item, as I said, item twelve's about customer experience, but you can see item fourteen's about complaints. They're really clearly linked. Item fifteen's our budget and item sixteen is our medium-term financial strategy. So hopefully, you can get a sense that the rest of this agenda is really closely linked and it's a kind of significant and comprehensive... linked, and it's a kind of significant and comprehensive response to the organisation's approach to development and change. And therefore, it isn't always the easiest thing to present, and I know sometimes it's a little bit impenetrable. So, thank you for bearing with us. I, just by way of a quick couple of other points around context, the transformation journey is around the same timeframe as our medium-term financial strategy, and we know that there's a gap over the medium term. So, item 11, the Future Sheffield Programme for Scope, sets out how we want to go about identifying those savings, not in an annual year-by-year process of salami slicing, but looking at what the council does, really clearly aligned with its council plan, its children's services belonging strategy, its growth strategy, and the tier-one strategies that are set out in the paper, and then allocating budget and activity to those. So, just by way of where we've got to, it's really important to recognise the programme begun around establishing leadership, directorate capacity, following that period of change. So, the appendix one sets out the background and history around that. The next phase of that programme was about the first foundations. So, we've set out how we've responded to the peer review, we've got a council plan, a new performance management framework, the committee for finance is now the Finance and Performance Committee, we've got an M T F S. So, we've really strengthened that. As a reminder to the committee, I'm sure you won't forget, in April, you agreed a really significant digital strategy, which is about improving the customer experience around anyone that uses our digital services, and our workforce's experience of I T and digital services as well. And you had a really detailed work plan that set that out. And the customer experience paper that you agreed in April was a high-level strategy. So, item 12 sets that out in some detail, and sets out the design principles that we'll use to work that through. So, we do need to go further to embed the change, and we need to keep it really focused on people and improvements. So, item 11 sets out the opportunities for future savings, it sets out the scope and the development of those, and it sets out an appendix to the process by which we've used to develop that. You can see the amount of work that we've gone on, undertaken in creating an organisational baseline, you can see that we've done a lot of work on process reviews and understood there's significant points of friction where customers pass from one place to another, they might not get their query resolved right first time at first point of contact. And you can see that we've got started to go through lines of external expenditure as well. So, the first paper essentially recommends 16 proposals by which we want to develop the next phase of Future Sheffield, and we would expect to bring the development of each of those proposals of the type that you can see in item 12, the customer experience proposals, to committee in further, in due course. And we would expect to present budgetary proposals as part of the budget-setting process this year, and we would expect to provide performance updates to Finance and Performance Committee going forward as well. The, I'm just going to try and be a little bit more concise. So, just recognising that there's a lot in there, I'm really happy to take questions on that, on that paper, but essentially, what we're looking forward is, looking for, is a future scope for the transformation programme, and setting out what that looks like in terms of aligning budgets to priorities, the delivery of our strategic plans, and that line-by-line review of external expenditure. The second paper around customer experience, a bit more detailed, and Tom's got some more detail on that. But what I'd say is, you can see there that there are about 1,100 F T Es working in that space. So, 1,100 of our workforce are actually directly serving our customers. It's about £51 million of the money that we spend, and it's about 16% of the council's activity. So, we know to really make a difference to the people that we serve, we need to be better in terms of the I T that we provide our colleagues to do that work, better about the processes that serve our customers, support our workforce more coherently as one group of people, not lots of different groups of people across the council. And you can see we're beginning to look at the customer journeys and the experience that our residents and customers have, and then work around supporting that. And over the summer, you'll begin to see us start to communicate on proposals around a new website for people, and improved our transactional services. Right now, we've got people in supporting our contact centres on optimisation and capacity building in that team. However, we do need to strengthen our planning and approach and support around that, and that's what item 12 sets out. And we need to make sure there's single and accountable leadership in that space as well. So, I was going to leave it there by way of introduction and contextual remarks. Tom knows a lot more of the detail about customer experience, and I've got plenty of colleagues in the room who have been really engaged and supportive, and I know members have participated in the working group that supports this as well, but I'm super happy to take questions. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, indeed. Thanks for presenting 12, items 11 and 12, but also drawing the links between the rest of the agenda items, and we're not going to make you present all of them as well, don't worry. But I think, you know, what this demonstrates is how, you know, we set out the council plan last year, and now there is a series of work, which is, in effect, kind of rewiring this council, changing how we work, to do things differently, to make sure that we have that clear focus on improving the customer experience. And it would be good to get any reflections from colleagues here. I think two people indicate already, councillor Belbin, councillor Agenzio, and then councillor Dale. Let's take those three and come back, and then see if there's any further reflections. Councillor Belbin.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Claire, for presenting there. And I think this is hugely a significant piece of work. I think, as you said there, you know, the work that's flown out of the council plan really is about making the change to how we do things as a whole council, moving away from some of the silo-based approaches that we've sometimes fallen into through individual departments and committees and so on, and very much about putting people at the heart of what we do, which I know is, of course, one of the key tenets of our council plan. But I think it's really important to say that what is driving the, you know, some of this sounds, as you say, it sounds very quite technocratic and so on, but what is driving these big strategies around digital, around customer experience, is making sure that people are getting better outcomes by empowering our staff, by making sure our staff really have the time and energy to put into producing better outcomes for people. And that means by having better I T, having better systems, we will all, as councillors, have heard those horror stories of people spending ages on the phone trying to get through, or being passed around from pillar to post. And this is very much, this strategy is aimed at putting the customer very firmly at the heart of what we're doing, and making sure that we're responding to them first time, working around them, and not trying to make customers follow our sometimes obscure processes, but putting them right at the centre of things. So, thank you for that. I want to thank you as well for making sure that, I think, I know that this Future Sheffield programme is going to keep coming back to this committee, and we'll keep looking at this as it develops. You know, we are talking about quite a lengthy programme, although we'll, I think we'll stop to see stepped improvements along the way, looking at a new website from the autumn, and that will be one of the first kind of ways that the public can really see how we're changing our approach to this. So, I just want to thank you as well for keeping members fully informed and engaged around this through the working groups that we have, also trade unions and staff groups, I know this will, you know, obviously have a big impact for them further down the line, but making sure that we're constantly engaging both councillors, staff and members of the public with this work, I think is really important. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Belbin. I think that's absolutely right to just acknowledge at this point that it will come back to this committee in due course, but also, perhaps more crucially, the work that is taking place through the Future Sheffield Transformation Programme will find its way into lots and lots of work across the council, and we will be seeing the effects of this over the coming months and years ahead. Councillor Agenzio.
Yes, thank you, Claire and Tom, for the reports. It's, I was just reflecting on how complicated the whole thing is, because this is like something that we've needed for a long time. And although it will have a huge impact on our finances, it's also the right thing to do, it's like by actually rationalising our processes, by having that one council approach, we are going to save a considerable amount of money over the medium term, but more importantly, people's experience of the council will improve enormously. The only thing I want to draw attention to is the fact that this is like quite a lengthy process, expanding over a number of years, it's not something that can be achieved quickly because the council is a very complex organisation, it's a very large organisation in terms of staff, and so how many people we deal with. So, it's not a magic wand that solves things very quickly. So, we also have to recognise that people's experience of the council continues to not be always, you know, what we want. So, people have to be patient with us whilst all these things come to be, but progress will happen, and is happening already, and we know that is much better in certain areas already. And also the fact that we have discussed the lengths, and we raise it all the time, when we talk about digital, we're not meaning that everybody's got to be digitally capable or have the ability, but having a very good digital offer means that people that can't use digital will be dealt with quickly. And I think that's really important, because it's important to reassure people that we're not wanting everybody using apps or the website, et cetera.
Thank you very much. Councillor Dale.
Thank you, Chair. Coming from someone who was really quite impatient for this to be going, and myself and councillor Nas, we're co-chairs of the transition committees that were looking at our customer experience. So, you know, we know that this has been going on for quite a while. This is really exciting stuff. And, you know, we have got, and I can see it, I can see the shift, you know, the absolute change to our commitment at Citizens of Sheffield. And I know, you know, we're speaking now in a different language about customers, because historically, when people have called the council, they've not felt like a customer, they felt as if they were a bit of a problem to be dealt with. But now, it's about the standard and how we treat people the same way as if they were, you know, ringing up towards any other paid service that they were getting, they are paying us for a service. So, this is really, really important. And sort of echoing what councillor Agenzio was saying, you know, coming from a children's perspective, when we get this right, we get this really right, and then we will ensure that the outcomes for our children and young people and their families will be absolutely fantastic, I think. You know, we talk about the driver around it being financed, but it's not that, this is about better outcomes. And no matter whether you're a customer, a partner or a stakeholder, I think the proof will be in the pudding when people start to come back to us and say, you know, I had a really good experience. I'm feeling, I'm sensing that there has been a shift, and we are learning, when we get it wrong, we're actually addressing it rather than ignoring it, which kind of has been an historical thing. So, I think, well done to everyone for this, it's really exciting, so let's get cracking, and let's kind of see it working, because it's just fantastic. Thank you.
Thanks very much, councillor Dale. What I'm going to suggest, I've got two more colleagues who've indicated, so I'm going to take some more comments and then come to you, I think. So, councillor Thornton, then councillor Johnson.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the report, I think it's very welcome. I think a bit of what I'm about to say is going to echo a little bit of what councillor Dale's just said about the changing shift of how, in terms of the language and also how we deal with people. You know, a big part of approaching complaints is listening and making people feel heard. When I was first bringing the issue of housing repairs to council in 2020, I was told it was all fine, I was compared publicly to Donald Trump, told I was populist for bringing up the issue, and residents that came to full council had their public questions cut down. So, I'd like to hope, and I think that we have moved on a bit from that. And the report, I think, certainly highlights that we're wanting to deal with people in a more proactive and engaged and kind way. But coming to today, I think we've kind of seen how long, you know, councillor Johnson as Chair of Housing, that you want to spend on international issues that we have little to no bearing over, really, where we do have tens of thousands of people in council tenants crying out to get their repairs done. You know, not just saying that you support repairs, but actually tangibly having their repairs done and on time for their homes. The Regulator of Social Housing has said that we are deemed to be failing, and I do think we need to listen to that. I know at full council, in a written response to my question, that councillor Johnson as Chair of Housing did not seem to agree that we're failing on the issue of housing repairs.
Sophie, if you could speak to the report.
I will do, yes, thank you. You know, it does deeply concern me that you don't seem to want to listen to that. I don't expect you as officers to acknowledge or comment on a political point. I just want to ask how we are responding tangibly to the Regulator of Social Housing report on council house repairs. You know, we've seen in the report as well about how the biggest response in the report was an apology, and I just would like to think that we can go further than that and actually deeply resolve the issue and get things right first time as well. Because thank you very much for the report.
Thanks very much. And by pure coincidence, I will now come to councillor Johnson, you may respond if you wish, please, I don't want to get into a back-and-forth on this, I know the points that have been made. I think, you know, there is a serious regulatory judgment that was issued to the council a couple of weeks ago, and it is being dealt with. The Housing Policy Committee is the appropriate place for a discussion about the action plan that will follow, and there is a member working group that will be working with senior officers to make sure that we are dealing in full with the, to make sure that we comply with the regulator, and that we improve the service that we are providing to the tenants of the 38,000 homes which we are responsible for. So, councillor Johnson, and just remind you to keep focused on the items that we're discussing today. Thank you.
That's okay, I wasn't going to go into that territory, but yeah, thank you for doing that. I was just going to say, thanks, thanks to the team first of all, because I think, yeah, we all agree, it's something that's very welcome. I think what Dawn said, it's time to get cracking, but in fact, I think they've already got cracking, and cracking quite a lot, so that's really good. And of course, you know, it's certainly obvious to, you know, look at the issues that Sophie's raised, you know, actually really important stuff. What I was just going to ask, my question was just on the finances, so in the report it says the council will use the review criteria to identify in the order of £30 to £15 million of savings, it's on page 69. I just wanted to just check what we mean by that. Are we saying on that that these shifts in the way that we do business, the way we interact with whole population at Sheffield are significant, this is such a significant piece of work, it's very welcome after so many years, that it's anticipated to result in that order of savings, rather than it being a savings target that is code for making cuts to services?
Okay, thank you. Councillor Agenzio, I know you need to leave, thank you for your contributions today. Final point, councillor Nas, on this one, and then I'll come back to Claire and Tom.
Thank you, just a quick comment, thank you very much for the presentation today, and all the work that officers have been doing. I always get anxiety when I think about digital inclusion, exclusion, but I'm really pleased that there's quite a lot of in-person support in this, and that's now given me lots of confidence in this process. But I also think that not only is this good for local people, for our workforce partners, but also for us councillors, I think it'll provide us with greater clarity, and also it'll help us understand and shape council services for better. So, thank you very much, I really welcome this, and I agree with councillor Dale, you know, we just need to get on with this now.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody. Claire and Tom, I'll come back to you for some brief comments, if that's okay.
I'll keep it brief, I am, I sense there's a group of impatient women in the room, and I might count myself amongst those impatient women. A colleague of mine said to me that customer service is a state of mind and not a department, and that's certainly something that we've been trying to build within this. So, for assurance, things like housing repairs processes, or schools admissions processes, or whatever process, or whichever bit of the council are included within the scope of this, and we will be seeking to look at those opportunities that we've identified through, I mean, it's tedious, but process redesign, to make sure that we can realise that. So, I would seek to offer that assurance. I think the comments about face-to-face versus digital, it's really important. So, again, going back to the target operating model, the way we want to be as an organisation is that you can talk about customer experience and process and digital and technology, but you can also talk about community empowerment, and I think it's really important to recognise the work that our colleagues do in adults and children's, and commissioning around preventative and upstream is a really important part of that. And actually, our localities model is a really good opportunity for us to think about how we deliver for communities, in communities, with communities. So, I'd certainly want us to think about that within the scope of what we do. So, in terms of what that means savings-wise, I think what we're really saying in this report is, we need to do a number of things, we need to stop duplicating effort. So, first of all, we duplicate a lot of things across the council, and we need to stop doing that. We need to be much more efficient in how we deliver, including in the technology we commission as well. So, we know that we have lots of points of friction and expenditure in that. And the work that we've done in digital And the work that we've done in digital, for example, enables us over a period of three years to deliver savings through renegotiating contracts, deleting things like duplication of applications and still enhance the capacity of our IT department to the tune of around 50 new roles over three years. So there are really great examples of where we can recycle that expenditure. But given the size of our financial gap, and I'm, I'm sure Philip will talk about, more about this later on, we also might have to make some policy decisions about the things that we, we choose to do in terms of service delivery, when we choose to buy it, when we choose to deliver it, when we choose to work in partnership, how we seek external funding to support that and make some choices. And what this report says is we've got the opportunity to do that. When we make those decisions and those recommendations to you as members, it needs to be done in a clear and transparent way, really clearly aligned to an evidence base that says what are we trying to do as a council? And what does the evidence tell us about what processes work and that's, and what interventions work? And that may mean that there's some difficult choices for, for you to make as members around those policy decisions. So I, I think it would be fair to recognise that. And then also recognising that over a period of time, three years, five years, the shape of our workforce might change as well. So we might be looking at different types of roles, working across departments, thinking about where we can cut our cloth accordingly. So an example is, do we spend on communications within our means? Do we grow our capacity to communicate all of the amazing things that we want to do? So there's some choices in there all the way along the line. And I don't for one moment pretend it will be easy, but they will be sent to committee, which is one of the reasons we wanted to draw so clearly the link between this, the medium-term financial strategy and the ambition that we've set out around a budget process that's prioritisation led. So you'll be doing work in, in policies and through the budget process to explore that.
I think Claire has probably said it, said it all there Chair, so I won't add anything further.
Okay, thank you very much indeed. So thanks colleagues for your comments and from the nods of agreement with Claire's statement that customer experience is a state of mind, not a department, that there's something that is agreed with by members. So we've got two sets of recommendations to take a look at. Item number 11, the recommendations are on page 60, that we note the work undertaken to date on the future Sheffield programme and agree the scope and of the next phases of the programme. Agree the scope of savings identified should be reflected in the medium-term financial strategy and request that the director of finance and commercial services build them into the next iteration of the MTFS. And three, agree the drawdown of the earmarked transformation funding to progress with the strategic transformation initiatives and detailed proposals. Our colleagues happy with those recommendations. Thank you very much indeed. The next set of recommendations are on page 102 in your pack. And it is recommended that S and R note the aims and approach of the council's customer experience programme, endorse the focus of the first phase of the customer experience programme, agree to progress further development and delivery of the customer model and agree for a progress report and delivery by the customer experience programme to be presented to this committee in November. Our colleagues happy with those recommendations. Thank you very much. Thank you to the team who've worked on this, who are in the room and who aren't here today. Please pass on our thanks to them and we will look forward to the next phases of the work. Moving swiftly on to item number 13, enhancing our approach to engagement with citizens and in communities. And we are joined by Laurie Brennan. Laurie, perhaps you can just briefly introduce yourself, welcome, and give us then a brief introduction to the paper.
Thank you Chair. My name's Laurie Brennan. I'm the head of policy and partnerships in PDE in the city council. Before I start, I just want to thank, thank my colleagues Dan Spicer, Elena Briggs and Ed Sexton who have worked tirelessly on this piece of work and continue to do so with colleagues in governance committee as well. It's, it's, it's perfect timing. I'm quite excited to be here doing this because the alignment between the papers as Claire just set out is, is, is perfect really. It shows the transformation and the, the work we're undertaking as a council. Really what it shows in, in the paper you've got in front of you is that the proposals in future Sheffield are vital to enabling us to deliver our council plan, but also that to become a more community and customer focused organisation. And as the paper on customer experience sets out, having a coherent and ambitious approach to community engagement is right at the heart of that. It's central to enable, to making those ambitions deliverable. I point you in the direction of paragraph 1.13, which I think probably better than anything, I probably could articulate, sets out why community engagement is fundamental to us really. It gives us, if we want to be a high performing council, this sets out and it, it, community engagement gives us the knowledge and insights to meet the ambitions of, of citizens. It tells us the things we need to do and how we, and how we should do them, but it also ensures the things we do are shaped by the people of the city. It builds trust and enables us to get, and we get, it builds trust and enables us to get things done with and for our communities. And essentially that is what the paper sets out in some detail. I think if you look at appendix one, it sets out some of the, the evidence we've got for the, and the challenges we've faced down the years and, and thankfully we have some strong citizen stakeholder and independent insights which have flagged to us the things where we should be getting better and the things we should do better. And, and we know we need to make improvements whilst we have some good standards of practice already, which is summarised in appendix two, but we do know there's more to do. The report marks an important step change to, for Sheffield City Council being more community focused. And it also proposes that this, this committee makes a clear statement of intent and seeks to improve standards across the organisation. Governance committee, colleagues from across, across parties, but also with stakeholders and independent experts from the city are working hard on developing a new perspective on engagement for Sheffield and ambition for where Sheffield City Council should be. Particularly if we want to be recognised nationally for its, for our innovative approach and open approach to community engagement, which is set out in paragraph 1.4.3 in the paper. What the paper also suggests is a set of good foundations for engagement, which are outlined in appendix three. And that appendix is there to sort of create the foundations and the basics which we need to get right across the organisation. And that is a guide and advice to officers in everything we do for how to undertake better engagement, to improve consistency and the quality and the standards that citizens should expect when they're engaging and listening and connecting with the council. These are a starting point and not, not the set, not setting the ambition, they're setting foundations. And the ambition is the thing that governance committee are developing with, with stakeholders. So I'll, I'll close there with them to point to the recommendations, which are asking the committee to just to, to approve the statement of intent, the set out in the paper, to approve and I'm happy to take any questions on the, the proposed foundations for good engagement. And also note the delegation to the director of policy, democratic engagement to update these as necessary because this is a learning process for all of us. And finally, just to note and welcome the governance committee's work on, on the development of a vision for the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed for joining us today and giving us that overview of the report. Three members who've indicated councillor Melwin, councillor Crossland and councillor Johnson. Can I deceive anyone else? And councillor Hurst? I will take those four, come back and then in the interest of time, given the rest of the agenda, we'll move through, if that's okay. So colleagues from now on could keep their comments relatively brief. Thank you very much. Councillor Melwin.
Thank you. And I'm really pleased that this piece of work has actually come on the same agenda as a customer experience work because I think it's really important that we recognise that the council doesn't only relate to people in our city as customers, that is very important, but actually how we engage members of the public with the work that we do on all kinds of levels and the different levels at which we might want to engage them is really, really vital as well. So, and I think it's great to have that kind of cross-council support if we support this paper here today by bringing this through S and R. I think it just demonstrates the council's commitment to this way of working, which is something we've been looking at closely on the governance committee over the last year or so. And I just want to again really confirm how committed we are to co-creation, co-design and co-production in this space, that this cannot just be about a few councillors sitting down and deciding how it should be done for Sheffield. You know, we are working with officers, but most importantly, we are working with external stakeholders and especially those who bring an awful lot of expertise to this. So I suppose again echoing a point from earlier, I would just ask that there is a little bit of patience because although I am sure people will want to tell us to get on with this as well, I think doing that co-design and co-creation necessarily involving more people and making sure the right people are involved in developing this work is really, really crucial.
Thank you very much. Councillor Crossland.
Thank you Chair. Thank you Laurie for the report and for the brief update that CPL had on Monday. I know it didn't intend to be like this, but it does feel that CPL has been a little bit sidelined in a way, even though it's like one of the key committees with this. So my first point is would the Communities Parks and Leisure Committee be able to have some sort of briefing or input on this as, as it progresses? The report also mentions local area committees as one of the key elements. But my experience is that the staff are incredibly useful and absolute centrepieces of our communities, but they are massively overworked and under-resourced. So would this piece of work come with anything that could help alleviate that? Just to make sure that we, we're looking after our staff as well. And finally, I think as Fran said, it was good that this report came today alongside the customer experience and everything, because there's no point in listening to people unless we actually act on what they say. So I think it was really good and hopefully the two things progressed together because one cannot succeed without the other.
Thanks councillor Crossland. I think I can probably deal with the first point very quickly. Yes, committee briefings can always be made available to people. And on the, the second point around lax, I'm sure officers will want to come in, but the, you know, the point of engagement is that, you know, new possibilities could, could open up. And if we're working with citizens and residents in a different way, then, you know, I think that means that some of the current ways of working won't always be the same. So I think there's, there's work of course to be done, but colleagues will probably want to comment briefly on that. Councillor Johnson, then councillor Hurst.
Thanks very much. Very welcome piece of work. You know, happy to support this with the engagement, the statement of intent and the foundations for good engagement, which, which looks to me like a really useful, workable document and I hope it is. I just wanted to ask, has it been run past the people, our own staff within the council who actually do engagement? So I'm thinking in my context of tenant engagement, we've got a few people who do that, just to see if it's workable for them really.
Councillor Hurst.
Thank you Chair, yes. Thank you for this Laurie, it's a really welcome report. And like Douglas, I, I appreciate very much the foundations for good engagement pack. Too often in previously, we've had other councils doing things to us again, rather than with us. And I, I think occasionally we've, we've been guilty of approaching engagement and consultations and moving forward as doing tick, tick box exercises for engagement and consultation. And this quite clearly underlines that all the work that's been going on over the past two or three years is, is paying fruit and is, is coming through. And we don't think about consultation, engagement and joint working in that same way anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Laurie, I'll come back to you for some brief remarks on some of the points you might want to pick up and I'm conscious others might want to come in as well. Thank you.
Thank you Chair. And I'll try and work through all this. I think Kate might want to come in on the, on the lax point. Well, if I just run through some of the comments, really, really echo what Fran, Fran said, and I've really been, it's been fantastic working with governance committee because the piece of the, the member working group has been set up through that is not just derived from governance committee, it's kind of cross-party and cross-council. It's sort of a coalition of willing and interested and, and members really. So it's very, very useful. Does involve stakeholders and from the city as well to try and co-produce the vision. On the CPL side, absolutely. I mean, it was really good conversation that we had on Monday, I think it was this week. And I think in that session, all for that, we're happy to come back and talk to you at any other point, including with the wider committee. And that stands open to every policy committee really. And this is the sort of a movement of change rather than just being a, a set of briefings to, to members, so that's fine. And I'll, I'll leave, I'll come back to your point on lax as well. And the point around that sort of, that broader innovation and learning, which I think Douglas sort of starts to pick up your points as well, but also councillor Crossland, the sort of how we develop this as we go through. I think this is, this is drawing a line in the sand to say this is the basics, what we expect, but it's a learning process. And I think certainly working with your colleagues, for example, in, in housing and tenant relationships, some things will work for them. And as you'll see in the foundations, it's a flexible toolkit which sort of says you use different things in different scenarios. What we don't have is one core team of capacity for this. There's not like a central like knowledge centre for all this. Certainly my team will can help and advise. And what we found through the work we've been doing is we've built a community of practice in the, the whole city council because we have expertise across the organisation. What we need to do is network that better and we're trying to do that because actually that therefore provides that mutual support, that shared learning, that kind of sort of sharing of good practice, but also places to, to test ideas about how you engage citizens so we can sort of challenge each other to get better at this. And finally, I would also say the foundations piece is a, is a, is a starting point. So there's important learning and development we all need to do as part of this as well. And obviously we'll, we'll be doing that with, with members. And just thank you for Diane's, councillor Hurst's comments as well, because through governance committee, you've been an important part of that as well and I really welcome the comments you've made there.
Thank you. Chief Executive.
Thanks, sorry, I know what, I just wanted to restate that point really and it's, it's partly response to councillor Crossland's point. And I think it is really key that we see this as a document and a toolkit that's useful to staff across the whole organisation. So there are staff and colleagues working in adults, in, in childrens, in planning, in transport, pretty much every part of this entire organisation who, whether they maybe have been supported or recognised it are hugely important in terms of community engagement. And what, what this piece of work seeks to do is, is exactly as Laurie said, create a line in the sand that says this is the, this is the baseline, this is the foundation, this is the support, this is the relation, this is the network across the organisation. This is our intent and then creates the space, I think, for the work of governance committee to raise our sights even further. So I think it's really welcome that your committees so engaged. I think it's also something I'd hope that all the committees will want to take briefings on and make sure that they're happy, that their, their colleagues and, and their officers are well aware of this. And we'd really welcome council's support in, I guess, holding offices to account, holding us to account, holding colleagues to account to make sure that they're applying this in their work. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. I think that's a really important point for us as committee chairs to be, to be using this, to be asking when work comes forward, where there is involvement, engagement with the public, is the foundations document being referred to? Are we, are we taking into account the good practice that we know exists in the council and making sure that we iterate this work going forward? Because as the recommendations say, this is a living document and we want it to evolve over time. Got recommendations which Laurie has already healthily outlined, so can I ask if members are happy to approve those recommendations? Great, thank you very much. I need to ask for your permission to extend the meeting to make sure that we can just cover off the remaining agenda items. Good. Excellent. Oof, the challenge has been laid down. Item number 14 is the, thank you very much Laurie, the annual complaints report 2023, 24. Thank you very much for your patience. Tom, we've met you already today. Colleen, just for the benefit of people at home, perhaps you can just introduce yourself and then briefly introduce the report. Thank you.
Good afternoon everyone, thank you. My name's Colleen Bygrave-Saul. I'm acting joint head of customer services and I'll be presenting this paper about the annual complaints report. The purpose of this paper really is to bring to your attention the performance of Sheffield City Council against the requirements for handling and managing complaints for the financial year of 2023, 2024. We attended this committee back in April and at that time it was agreed that this is the committee that would have lead responsibility for complaints, including the monitoring of complaint handling performance on behalf of Sheffield City Council. It includes quantitative and qualitative data, which is highlighted mostly in appendix one for your perusal. But I would also like to draw your attention to point 1.5, which just notes that the recent implementation of the local government social care ombudsman complaint handling codes, together with the housing ombudsman handling codes, require that an annual complaints performance service improvement report should be reported through this committee and published on the section of our website. And the response of this committee should also be published alongside. And our response to this report is included in paragraph 1.15, which are the conclusions and recommendations arising from therein. And it forms part of one of the recommendations that we're asking you to consider today. Just moving on, also draw your attention as I mentioned to point 1, 1.10, which is appendix one, which is the finite detail of the annual complaints report. And whilst it, it may be a lot of numbers, what we do want to show is our commitment to improving the customer experience. the customer experience. And this is instrictly linked to the customer experience strategy, which forms the foundation for our continuing transformation and improvements in this area. We really do mean it when we say we put people at the heart of what we do, we listen carefully. And this is reflected in section 11 of the report, which shows the learnings, arguably probably the most significant part of the complaints process, to show how Sheffield City Council is responding to feedback from complaints. Just moving on really quickly, I won't go into most, many of the details, but appendix three outlines our strategic partners. They make up 30% of the overall complaints numbers, and so their inclusion in this report is critical. We are continuing to work very closely with them and would like to see them aligning also to the new complaint handling codes. The ombudsman report is only a provisional summary. We've only just received last week the finalisation from the local government social care ombudsman. Unfortunately, the housing ombudsman report will not be due until October of this year, so we're planning to come back to this committee in November to provide the full annual ombudsman report to present to you in November of this year. And finally, in appendix five, we have the council's complaints service improvement plan, which has been ongoing, actually, since 2021, when we started this transformation piece. And I'm pleased to say that we are seeing incremental improvements. And it outlines our continued direction of travel, which really is in three areas: to support directors, to improve complaint response times, to improve our equalities monitoring and geographical data recording, and also to improve in the breakdown and accuracy of the strategic partner, I should not say accuracy, the comprehensiveness of the Amy and Viola data contained within this report. And finally, just to say that there are a number of conclusions and recommendations outlined in 1.15. The biggest area that I think that we could improve on is the way that we record our complaints. This would actually help us in handling complaints, especially when they are escalated to the ombudsman. And this is something we will be taking particular note of through this financial year in supporting offices to do just that. And finally, from April 2024, the housing ombudsman statutory code came into effect, and we will be reporting against that in the future and showing our commitment to adopting the LGSCO, the Local Government Social Care Ombudsman's commitments, which actually don't come into effect until 2026. However, as a council, we have agreed that we will adopt that from September of this year, and we'll start recording against that. That's our appetite, to make improvements and to make customers feel listened to as part of the complaint handling process. There are four recommendations for you to consider, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you ever so much for your report and for the work that's gone into this. Now, I think colleagues will be able to see the lines that are being drawn between the various agenda items that we've discussed today in a really helpful way. councillor Belbin has indicated, councillor Johnson, can I just see if anyone else would like to come in? Okay, I'll take those two, and then we'll come back for any final remarks. councillor Belbin.
Thank you, Chair. In the interest of time, I'll be very, very brief, but I just wanted to highlight how well I think the team who are working on this take complaints as a learning opportunity and not just seeing it as something about we have got to try and hide away our complaints or bury them somehow. Actually, this report really reflects, and again, I know they take that approach right across the council when supporting other areas with this work. These are learning opportunities, these are opportunities to improve, and it's very much in line with the customer experience work that we discussed earlier. So thank you.
Thank you very much. councillor Johnson.
Yeah, again, thank you for the work on this. Happy to support these recommendations. It's really good, there's some practical examples in there of where there being those learning experiences, like councillor Belbin just said. Just on the figures, there's lots of figures in there. Absolute figures of how many complaints were received in a year actually isn't a very useful measure. Well, it's useful, though, is about trends over time. So I was going through the report and really asking the question, are we getting better or worse? I think we're getting better, but I suppose more refined question would be, in what areas are we getting better and in what areas getting worse? That's perhaps not quite so easy to tell from it. Are there any highlights you could use to answer that question?
Yes, we are getting better. I think the work has started within, from within the organisation and getting a cultural shift in officers' minds and hearts as to, I say, treat every complaint as you would treat your mum. If you do that, then you're going to have good customer experience, I would hope. And we can see that changing in officers' minds and attitudes towards complaints. It's a priority, they're helping responding better, they're committed to listen and contact customers. And I must say, the ombudsman codes that have come in now reinforce our commitment, and we're so in line with that, we're ready for this change. So I think the work has been internally, just shifting the mindset of officers, to not leave it in a tray on the side, but really to prioritise that as if it was their own complaint, and to really live and breathe the sentiments that they read when they receive a complaint. So that's one thing. We've also improved, sorry, our data collection and distribution of that data amongst executive directors and heads of service. So the accountability is now there, that officers know what complaints are where, they are fastly routed to officers for a quick response, and they are held accountable if they don't respond within the agreed timescales. Obviously, it's still a journey, we've still got improvements to make, but that shift, that cultural shift is definitely being seen and felt. And very soon, I'm hoping, that customers will feel that change themselves. And also, we've worked very much in professionalising, if you like, our responses to customers, making sure that our officers are trained well in how to respond and complete a response to show empathy and understanding and agreeing actions, rather than being told what's going to happen. We've worked significantly, particularly within the housing and repairs areas and the adult social care areas, and we will keep moving round to make sure that that consistent approach is applied. And then, hopefully, we will see that we'll meet timescales. I think I'm excited to come to the next year's meeting, because in quarter one, I can also see improvements in response times.
That's really positive to hear. Thank you to your team for your work. And I know that from my time back on all of it in standards a couple of years ago, this is not something that's just started, this is in fact, you know, years' worth of work that is getting us to this point, and that improvement journey is really good to hear about and to see reflected in the data. So we look forward to further discussion on this as well. Lots done and lots more to do. So colleagues, there's some recommendations in front of us. The S and R is asked to consider the analysis of the annual report and the breakdowns within it. Agree that the conclusions of recommendations set out in paragraph 1.15 should form the basis of our written response to the annual complaints report. Note the links to the customer experience strategy, which I think have been very well made today. And fourth, provide ongoing support to the implementations, service improvements, as outlined in the 2426 Complaint Service Improvement Plan. Colleagues happy to support those recommendations. Brilliant, thank you very much. All right then, item number 15, the 2023/24 final outturn position. And we're being joined by Philip Gregory. Philip, for the benefit of people watching at home, perhaps you can just introduce yourself and then briefly introduce item number 15. Thank you.
Good afternoon, thank you, Chair. I'm Philip Gregory, I'm the Director of Finance and Commercial Services and the council's Chief Finance Officer, Section 151 Officer. So this report for you this afternoon provides a final update on the revenue budget position for the year ending 31st of March 2024. The final outturn position for the year was an overspend of £15.6 million. This is consistent with the financial position that's been reported to this committee throughout the past year. The overspend is due to a number of factors. So Sheffield City Council is subject to many of the pressures that many local authorities face, particularly in respect to cost and demand increases that have arisen over and above the budgets that were provided when the budget was approved by full council in March 2023. The budget also included budget implementation plans, which are otherwise known as BIPs or savings. Those total £47.6 million for 2324. Seventy-eight percent of those BIPs have been delivered in full during the financial year, which is an improvement in delivery compared to previous years. Of the remaining 22% of BIPs that were not delivered in year, 14% are expected to be delivered this year, with 8% have been assessed as undeliverable. Those BIPs that were not delivered in 2324 added to the overspend position. The council identified one-off mitigations to offset overspends during the year, which totaled £21.5 million, ultimately resulting in the final overspend position. The continued reliance on one-off actions, though, is unsustainable as a way to manage our budget. The council identified £70 million of reserves in 2122 to support ongoing financial risks through to 2425. Funding this overspend, following overspends in 2122 and 2223, from this reserve left £13.1 million to support the financial position in future years. In response to this, as part of our financial planning process during year end, a contribution from the collection fund, which is income from council tax and business rates, of £12.5 million has been identified and added to the budget contingency reserve, taking the total in that reserve to £27.6 million to manage future budget pressures and planning. The report provides a brief summary of the financial position of each policy committee. The report also provides information for members on the work of the Budget Implementation Group of Officers and an update on the Transformation Fund budget and how it's been used during the year. The report asks you to note the updated information and management actions on the 2324 revenue budget outturn. I'm happy to take any questions, members of the committee.
Thank you very much indeed. Any questions for Philip? No? Well, item 15 and item 60, they're clearly very linked, so we will have a chance to fulfil the discussion in a moment with Philip. So this committee is recommended to note the updated information and management actions on the 2324 revenue budget outturn as described in the report. Can I ask colleagues if you're happy with that, to note it? Brilliant, thank you very much. Moving then swiftly through, Philip, item number 16, the medium-term financial strategy 2526 to 2829.
Thank you, Chair. This medium-term financial strategy sets out the early view of the financial position for the council from 2526, which is next financial year, through to 2829. The degree of certainty on the forecast financial position lessens over time as uncertainty increases as time progresses. Therefore, the most accurate forecast is for 2526. The assumptions on which the MTFS is created are reviewed regularly, and a summary of those assumptions are included in the report, with the basis for the assumptions set out in appendix two, which starts at page 260. A best and worst case evaluations have also been provided in appendix three, and that starts on page 263. So we have assumed that there will be no additional funding from government over the medium term, nor that the delayed fair funding review will be implemented in this time period. This is a prudent assumption, based on the fact that the Ministry for Housing, Communities and Local Government is an unprotected government department in the context of funding within central government. This position therefore increases our reliance on fees and income, including those from council tax and business rates. In updating these assumptions, the output that the committee should pay attention to are the resulting financial gaps in each year over the medium term. These are shown in the table on page 249 of the report and in more detail in appendix one, which is on page 259. The total budget gap over the four-year medium-term period is £68.9 million, with a budget gap of £31.4 million next year, which is 2526. As mentioned in the previous report on the outturn position, from last year, the budget contingency reserve balance is £27.6 million. Based on the financial outturn position in recent years, the contingency funds are unlikely to last, therefore, beyond 2526. Setting realistic budgets is crucial, and the council needs to reduce its reliance on one-off mitigations, including using reserves. The Future Sheffield report that you discussed earlier on sets out the scope of savings that might be realised, in addition to savings from work on improving customer experience and digital services that this committee have previously approved. The profile of when these savings might be delivered will be built into the future MTFS and budgets as those plans are developed and as those savings crystallise. It's worth noting that these programmes are unlikely to have a material impact until 2627, which means that the council will need to plan to meet the budget gap in 2526. The council has a clear set of priorities for the medium term within the council plan, including the committee statements, the climate statements that we referred to earlier this afternoon. To deliver the outcomes in the council plan will mean the council needs to direct its resources to meet those priorities. The council has begun to assess the budget allocated to each of the council plan priorities and how we can move towards a more priority-based budgeting approach in support of the council plan. The report also includes an appendix four, the productivity plan, which was requested from all local authorities by the previous government. This is included for information for the committee, having been submitted according to the deadline, which was last Friday. In addition, the MTFS will be updated later in the year, it's on your work plan for the December meeting, following an expected autumn statement from the new government. We also expect to be able to include values and profiled into relevant financial years from Future Sheffield and other transformation plans. So the report asks you to approve the MTFS as set out in the report and appendix one, endorse the proposed approach to ensuring the financial sustainability of the council, and to note the productivity plan. I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Philip. And I think it's really important that we, as a committee, take a proactive, cross-party and transparent approach to the MTFS and to this year's budget setting process. You know, there are significant challenges that we face as an organisation. Clearly, we've already talked about in a number of ways today, some of the ongoing work that we are doing to transform this organisation, and the way in which we are dealing with our financial pressures is also being transformed to take that more priority-based budgeting approach. So there is much to be welcomed in here alongside the challenges that we face. And as we have discussed in this chamber on a number of occasions, you know, clearly this is a relationship that we have with central government, and there will be ongoing dialogue with them over the coming months. As Philip has said, we are expecting further details from central government in the autumn, whether in the form of a budget or autumn statement or something. So can I see if any colleagues would like to speak on this agenda item? Just councillor Johnson? Yep, okay, councillor Johnson.
Just a very quick one, just obviously thanks for this, Philip, and indeed for the previous item I didn't speak on. Just obviously disappointing that the new government isn't coming up with any new money. Completely understand why, from a conservative accounting principle, it's right to proceed on that basis. It would be nice if there'd been something there. I'm guessing that there is every opportunity for the government to step up and provide something, and that will assist with the planning and budget gap process. So finally, just, I'm glad there is that recognition of the damaging effect of 14 years of austerity that's in the response, the letter to Mr Gove, as he then was, that's in there. So, yeah, that's a very good statement, actually a very robust letter that's been brought together there, so that's good work all round, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. Without wanting to rehearse the conversations that we had at full council last week with a number of colleagues here, I think, you know, I will just briefly reiterate that the new government has made a commitment to multi-year funding settlements and to ending the wasteful competitive bidding processes that local government has been forced into. We will await further details on that. They are now two and a half weeks into their new roles, and as Philip has said, there will be a budget when more detail will be set out. I don't expect, Philip, you to comment on that, but if there is anything in Douglas's statement you would like to pick up, please feel free to. If not, I will move to the recommendation, but I'll give you a chance to come back.
I think we've just based our assumptions on the intelligence we have so far. If that changes during some autumn fiscal event, we'll update the MTFS, which is why we've programmed that in for the autumn.
Excellent, thank you very much. So Philip's already read out the recommendations usefully. Our colleagues happy to approve those recommendations. Excellent, thank you. Thank you very much indeed. That is the conclusion of today's meeting. Thank you all for your contributions and patience. That was a long meeting. Thank you all.